That is a mark that not too many partners achieve. It just goes to show the dedication that the city has had with the program. And we're thrilled to be able to keep this partnership. I did want to just kind of give you just a brief update, let you know where we stand as far as the contracts and the customers that we currently have. Right now, there's a little more than 3,200 customers in the state of Or- or in the city of Orm. And that equates to about 5,300 contracts. So it's still a very strong partnership. The residents, your residents are happy for the program. Whenever you see a claim, we sent out a survey. And you can see that residents are judgmental at a 4.8 out of 5. So we do take that very seriously. If there's ever a upset customer or negative score that comes in, we do look at those and we try to address them and make sure that we fix it as much as we can. So really, Orm continues to be the standard when it comes to the partner, how a partnership should operate. Each time we have a communication goes out to residents, I work back and forth with Mr. McDowd. Give his feedback, any input the city might have, recommendations, what might really catch the residents' eyes. And then there's also a great page on the city website. So at any time, a resident, if they're interested in the program, there's a link in our phone number and a link to our website so that they're able to get that information right then and there. And we really do enjoy the partnership. And a little bit earlier today, I did give a check for a summer fest amount of $2,500. And we love the sponsorship. We look forward to continually be a sponsor. And you know, maybe, as I mentioned before, maybe one of these days I'll probably get to the grand marshal.
You may have to remember 400 or 2500.
A couple more zeros on there recently, Tom.
It's staggering with the limes.
Yeah, that's why you put as many zeros as you want.
So really, that, I just wanted to provide a brief update and really let everyone know about the great milestone. It's been a while, around a while to give a test to. This $1 million saving really is a fantastic milestone. Not that not too many partners achieve that. And we're thrilled that Orm reached that. And we're looking forward to saving $2 million.
Especially for a city of this size. You know, a million dollars is a lot in a city of this size. One thing that I would like to add is when I speak to other Utah cities about, you know, the partnership opportunity and what it is that we do. No pressure, but I use you all as a model. Because of the buy-in that you have, the proactive steps that you take by putting information on the website or addressing residents in the way that you do if they do have any questions. You know, that's the model partnership. That's really what makes it successful in a community so that you can reach milestones like that and help all those people. So I, you know, I congratulate all of you for doing it the right way. And as a result, making it successful for the folks that choose to participate, protect themselves.
Yeah, so you used to help us with our utilities, people who were low income, is that correct?
Yeah, you shared, you provided us a $5,000 partnership amount. Not a commission, but just $5,000 for being a partner. And we utilize that money to help low-income families who are struggling with their needs. So that intends.
That intends.
And also just to let you know, we do have a foundation called HomeServe Care. So that would be for any resident or that is not currently a partner. And let's just say they have an issue that basically puts them in dire straits. You can go onto Home Serve Care's and they can apply to have the job completed, no costs to them. Again, we'd always work with the collective contract. We actually got a call, this was earlier this year, I think the end of last year. A gal, a grandmother, caring for especially his grandson, whose husband just passed away from a chance. And then the sewer line went out. And we knew about this program and reached out to Steve and helped us through the application process. And that family got a new sewer line through this. They weren't a partner, they weren't paying their dues. Or they weren't, they weren't a customer, but they didn't care. They solved the need and they took care of this, yeah, this lady's, which was really grateful.
And typically, those come through referrals from the contractors in the field. It's somebody that's not a customer of ours. But the contractor gets called by a resident who has an issue and they tell them what it is. And you know, they're financially disadvantaged, they're not able to pay for the issue themselves. And you know, if they qualify, we do pro bono jobs. As a matter of fact, we just recently did a water line job as well in Boise. I had over $6,500. That was a pro bono job. So it's nice to work for a company that has a charitable foundation as an arm of the company to give back to the communities that we work for.
Could you define just what the program costs per person? And then what benefits are? And then also just how you get to the $1 million in savings?
Sure. Now, I'm, I'm not familiar with the pricing structure in Orm, so I can't speak to that. I don't know if you know the pricing, but I can fill in some of the other specifics.
Yes, so Orm for the water is $4.07 a month. And then sewer, I think it's like $5.05 and like 10 cents. And.
And those are separate charges that wind up on your water car, or sort of bill?
It's not.
They pay us directly.
Yeah, it's everything.
Oh, they're purchasing insurance.
Insurance policy.
Yeah, there's nothing, you know, policy is the same.
Directly, they pay directly, correct?
Correct, yes. And then they can bill annually, quarterly, annually, whatever works best for them. And then there's no deductible, no service charge. And then how it works with the claim, they just have to give us a call, send out a contractor. Whatever the issue is, they fix it. And then the contractor invoices us and we pay them. So really, all the homeowner has to do is give us a call.
Okay, so you're outsourcing it to local contractors?
Correct.
And you're like the insurance company?
Correct.
So so thanks about.
And maybe, maybe some history is good. So we entered this partnership in 2015. Chris Sher, he isn't here, Chris Sher, our public works director. The issue we were running into was that we would have citizens called because their sewer line went out. And they assumed that that was the city's, they didn't know that that was their responsibility. It's connected to the city's sewer line. And that's when they would learn that this was their responsibility, not ours. And state laws, they've actually passed a state law now requiring cities to notify residents of this responsibility. So our partnership with service line warranties fulfills our state requirements to notice all of our residents of their responsibility. But it also gives them options as to what they can do to protect themselves moving forward. So we were getting a lot of those calls. It was a bad time to tell somebody that this is their responsibility. And we want to be more proactive. Energy to this partnership about, again, almost seven years now. And it's, it really has reduced, though, we don't get those calls anymore. Of people wondering if the city's going to fix the water.
Does it cover everything from the meter to the house that goes wrong?
Whatever the homeowner responsibility is, so however that's defined. So the easy way to say it is from the foundation to the point of utility connection for both the waters.
So just whatever goes wrong, if it's plugged, or a line break, or whatever.
Broken, crack, leaking pipes, tree root penetration. Probably don't have too many broken external water lines that need to be thawed, that that's covered. Clogs, any of those types of things. Anything that impedes the flow or creates a leak, you know, what we call an operational failure is what's covered.
And then is the $1 million what you paid out towards those claims?
Correct.
That's what that is.
That's what we have covered for residents here now. We've reached that milestone of over a million now.
So if it's covered by your homeowners, that's what we have to worry about. Like hosted.
So external lines typically are not covered by homeowners insurance. There's coverage for damage that might be caused from sewage backing up into the house or those types of things. But the lines themselves typically are not covered. A lot of people have home warranties these days. That'll typically cover internal plumbing, but not the external. So that's kind of that no man's land that when this program was conceived and put into place 19 years ago is here's a ditch that we can fill that nobody else touches. So the two gentlemen that actually founded the company came up with this idea. Worked for a company called Colonial Gas that did it for gas lines. And they thought, well, why can't we do this for water and sewer lines? Program was born.
So we can tell when you sent out the, when the mailer was out because they have friends that say, hey, this is a good thing to do. Is there a, is there kind of an age as far as when I was in there? That you should absolutely say, you know what, yeah, for sure, you need to do this because your home's 25 years old or 30 years old. And the data shows that after 35 years, when professionals see, probably sort of pop up.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good question. And that's really, it's dependent upon materials used, of course. If you have no idea what's underground, based on the age of your home, you can kind of get a general idea of, you know, this might be terracotta or orange bird, something along those lines, that those things just basically collapse. But generally speaking, most materials, when you start getting to that 25 to 30 years and beyond, it's not a matter of if it's going to happen, it's a matter of when. The severity, of course. How bad will it be? You know, so really, that's one of the beautiful things about the way the program is offered is it provides that proactive education. But it also allows the homeowner to decide themselves whether or not they want to participate in it. Some people will just kind of pluck their ears, no, this will never happen to me. And then it does, and they go, oh, I should have got it. Right? So really, it depends on materials. But generally speaking, 25 to 30 years, you're entering into that period where, I mean, even on modern materials, joints can fail and so on. You start getting leaks or with sewer lines, when joints fail, that's where those tree roots start getting in. Every now and then on LinkedIn, some of our contractors, for sure, will share pictures of some severe tree root issues. Basically, there are tree roots that are in the form of the pipe because they fill the entire inside of the pipe. They just break the pipe away and get out tree roots that are, you know, whatever's up with sewer lines. It's horrible.
One complaint that I've had, if you're willing to accept those, is sometimes someone sees a problem, they immediately call the plumber of their choice without calling you and find out that plumber A wasn't approved, plumber B or C are. How can we make, how can you make that clear? And how does our city reply? Hey, I've got this problem, I had this insurance from I don't know who, what do I do?
Yeah.
I was, I was just gonna say, when those instances happen, we do work with those individuals so that they're reimbursed. It's, it complicates the process from a customer service standpoint because of the way we're set up. So I'm not going to, you know, misrepresent and say, yeah, we just have this smooth process put in place for that. Because it gets tricky when it comes to compensating contractors and so on. So in the messaging, you know, we try to make it clear to them that don't call the contractor, call us. So I would say that might be an area that we could look at is making it more prominent and communications.
Yeah, I mean, because if sewage is flowing into your home, you're not cool, cool thinking right now.
No.
And so you and I have a common friend, Watson, who lives over by you, Jeff, who called the wrong person, paid for the whole thing and got nothing. And so, you know, they weren't a happy customer. But if we, if we had that availability, you guys probably do if someone calls to the city. But again, that's assuming someone calls the city. And so that, that maybe send out a little sticker they put on, I mean, on the magnet on the fridge or what. I don't know if you watch Sewer.
Magnet actually jumped in my head.
Some way to just make sure that they know the step. Because when you're having a catastrophe, you're not getting clear.
Yeah, that's a great point. And if someone does bring your, plug it out on a, or try to get it resolved and make it work.
Okay. And to your point, why it might be good if we can come up with something like that to help in the partnership that we have here. Once somebody's a customer, they're not receiving marketing materials that go out. So they're not seeing that message. It's not being reinforced that if there's a problem, you call us. So people that we're soliciting to that aren't currently customers, they see that message. So that's an excellent point.
I'm inject.
Yeah, we should. Well, that's what jumped into my head when you said that, very west on magnets.
I have a freezer in the water. I stick to my.
I don't stick to stains.
But you want the new fridge is because the women have.
We'll figure, we'll figure something out. But that's a great point.
If I may as well, some may wonder, how did we develop this relationship with service line warranties? We actually did go through a formal request proposal process, a bid process. And so when we did award this, this contract and forge this relationship, it was finally in our competitive process where service line stood out as the best of the organizations and companies that offer this kind of service. So it's, it's not the, you know, there's, there's sometimes concern that this was something that was, this was done exclusively one vendor. But no, we can go through a formal process and forge a contract based on a formal bidding process.
I'd also like to point out, you were our first partner in Utah as well. So we appreciate you taking a chance on a little company that was based out of Kennington, Pennsylvania at that time. Just outside of Pittsburgh before HomeServe acquired us. And you gave us the opportunity. And I feel like we've come through, but as I mentioned, I use you all as the model. Because I feel like you can come through for us as well and be proactive in the partnering.
There's some questions you may get at times. We need commissions, and we obviously need a commission for what they have. So they have a commission model that they offer. We actually had a price reduction, maybe a deal of commission to our residents. And then, yeah, there's three bidders. One, one did an opt-out program, which we weren't interested in an opt-out program where everybody was going to get this. These are the other bidders. Service line warranties bid and then home serve bid. The opt-out one, I don't know what happened to them, home served, then bought service line warranty. So now the other, the two bidders are now together, but they honored all of our contracts and agreements and nothing has changed.
And really, the reason that happened is because the service line warranties had the endorsement naturally of cities and HomeServe wanted that, so they bought the company. We're also partnered with and endorsed by Utah's U.C. cities and towns. So if you come to the conference and saw Lake City, you'll get to see me again.
One last quick question. So that 3224 customers covered, is that how many people have you given a check to or ever paid for their service?
Oh, no, the 788, those are the complete claims as of the beginning of April.
So what's the difference between the 5356 and 3224?
So some customers might sign up for water and sewer, some might just sign up for water, some might just sign up for sewers. That's where you get the 500 contracts.
Oh, I see.
Some customers have.
Oh, yeah, very different.
Yeah, it's à la carte, so they can choose any one or combination. Some people might pick just water or just sewer, some will pick both. Some people will add any in-home funding. So it's really flexible to what they desire as far as, you know, hey, I just got my water line replaced, so I'm not going to sign up for the water covered, but I don't know what's going on with my water line. So I don't know if I ever get that.
So that 788 basically is the $1 million. That's the cost to take care of. Any other questions?
I said, do I remember, our numbers, one or these?
They're, they're still pretty good, actually. Just in the last month, or I'm sorry, the last 12 months, we've completed 161 jobs, total of about $205,000. So it's still, it's kind of, it's still doing great.
When I look at the customers covered number on the weekly report that we get, it seems to be pretty steady. Because obviously, so it's a program you can opt in or out of at any time. So a lot of people when they have work done, they'll opt out. But we get new customers that'll opt in or those people will opt back in again later because the work that is performed is warranted for a year. So after that year's up, they might jump back in again in case something happens. So the number's always changing, but it's pretty steady.
Should answer your question, if any new guests sign up, it's $110.
Any other questions? We're gonna have to move on.
Okay.
Any others? Thank you for coming and updating us on that.
Thanks for coming. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it. Have a great afternoon.
Next up, the guys. There's a presentation on the fines.
All right, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and everybody who appreciate your time. This is a follow-up from about two months ago, just to kind of see where you're at. I know Aaron has met with several of you, got some of your feedback. We're kind of at that point where let's kind of make a decision. You guys make the decision collectively. And we'll move forward in a way at your recommendations. So again, the reasoning of this, the city of Orm has one of the lowest parking fine schedules in the state of Utah. Places a higher emphasis on those safety concern violations, which we talked about. And then we're changing how late fees are assessed to be in line with an update to the state code. Again, this is just a brief summary of what those look like. The proposal from ADA to 150 from 100. The safety concern violation 50 from 25. All other violations 40 from 25. Just a basic comparison, all other local cities around us are anywhere from 45 to 340. So we're behind the ball. So option one, we approve the resolution with the proposal with the fine increase and the amended late fee schedule. Option two, we don't approve the fine increase and we approve the late fee schedule change by resolution. So those are kind of our options. Want to get your feedback, where you're standing at this point. And then once we're there, we'll have, Aaron will draft what your recommendations are. And then we'll have our, our council to.
You go back essentially.
Yep.
Where's your late fees?
Yes. Aaron, procedurally, would these, if these amendments were to be made, would they be effective July 1? Or would they just be effective upon passage?
They would, I believe, be effective July 1 as part of the new budget. So that's part of it. And another thing, just in terms of discussing the numbers, we didn't just kind of pull $40 out of thin air. Most of the parking violations are enforced by the city, are violations of state code, state traffic code. And the state has recommended fines for those. And the vast majority of parking violations in the state are recommended to be fined to $40. In the, in the, in our justice court, if we were to file the case there instead of doing it similarly to what we are, which is more efficient, the justice court generally charged $40 rather than $5.
What's a safety concern? Give me an example.
So those are the ones if you look at. So these are kind of the ones that we, we had mentioned in the prior presentation. Fire line, fire hydrant, within 30 feet of a stop sign, obstructing traffic, and angle parking. A lot of those ones where you need to get an apparatus in there, someone trying to make a turn on the street, blind side. Potentially cause a traffic collision, things like that. So we just, as, as we were putting this together, we felt like that needed a more emphasis, right? As we talked about previously. Sometimes the $25 people would just kind of laugh at us and say, well, I'll just keep my car there, keep parked there, right? We want to have a little more. And then based off of the state recommendations as well.
In addition to the state recommendation, just as far as the history goes, the city passed an ordinance back in 2002 where we set up, where we decided we're not going to enforce parking through the criminal courts anymore. We're going to do it through, through a police department, through a civil process. And back in 2002 is when these fine amounts of $25 and $100 for handicap violations were adopted. And again, just so we understand where the $40 is coming from. If you check your inflation calculator, the government inflation calculator, February of 2002, which is when the ordinance was passed, to March of 2022, $25 then is worth $40.23 today. And so that's another justification for trying to, where these are personal problems. And why we're changing them, it's been 20 years since it's been addressed.
So to answer, answer your question, the late fee schedule is, was amended a few years ago in the state code. As I was researching, starting a parking team six months or so ago, myself and Aaron came across this code. We feel that the way our current pay structure is set up is not, could be construed as not compliant. So we're trying to be proactive in changing our late fee schedule. Where basically after 14 days, a 25% late fee would be assessed in addition to. Where currently, from the last presentation, I don't need to, it just, it doubles and then it doubles again. So we felt like that was a little excessive to the citizens. And so we're also, that was, is the other part of the disposal, of the fee disposal.
And is that, I know when I've got my spoon ticket, it says you need to wait a few days before you pay it. I always forget, rather than just comparing them.
Yeah.
Are, do these say the same thing on it?
So these are, these citations are a little different. They can come in and pay it at the.
We sound freaky.
As we, we have a partnership with a software company that we do our citations through. And Ernesto can attest, we're in the process of building an online payment system as well with the city map so they can make their payments online.
And then, I'm sorry, he was laughing at me. So you just can do it right when you get it or you have?
Yes, so that's your question though. You can, you can come into the records department the next day, process is immediate.
But you don't, and you're working on the online.
Correct. That's just going to be another feature. You don't have to come in, you can do it right from your.
The curb.
Right from the curb.
So. They're coming in as like an. Maybe in your case, they will accept your credit.
So I have a question on the angle parking. We were down in Spring, Spring Water. They all got tickets because there was a whole stack and they parked their cars in parts. So the question there would be, I mean, is the warning issued? And I think we need to be, I think we need to get warnings on the.
So we actually did, we actually issued out, I don't know about those specific vehicles, but we issued out, we've issued over 1,800 parking citations since the parking team has been inceptioned. And then we've issued over 3,200 warnings. So we've doubled our warnings compared to our parking citations. So a lot of that education and those warnings come first, prior to.
If we did that then, yeah, that's.
Yes, so that is now, I can't give you that specific situation. But the first. Yeah.
My house was just taken.
And speaking of Spring Water, they, we actually received a petition on a parking district. So we'll be speaking to you again in the coming months on that.
So when you go to non-safety violations, so does parking along the way in front of your house count for $30?
So that, if you look at the proposal, that would be into your, your all other violations of 40. The safety ones, we've done 50. Now, if you want to recommend that we do 40 for all, we can do 40 for all.
I'm just saying that particular violation.
That particular violation, no, that, that would be considered in all other violations.
Because that, and I know that's, that's a state requirement, right?
Correct.
It's also one of the most annoying violations because most people even know it's a real measure.
So my kids just drop the park. I'm glad they fixed the curb.
I think, I think they were taught by some.
Their dad.
Well, and I don't know, when I'm prepared, I don't think with numbers on that specific violation. But maybe that's what we can look into and see how much is enforced. Because I know that the police, as has been mentioned with the warnings that are given out, where twice as many warnings are given out as tickets. I know the police exercise discretion as to whether or not to actually take it someone for something like that, right?
Good, I, I don't know. That's just a violation that comes off the top of my head, it's been extremely annoying. It hasn't happened, maybe it's happened to people all around.
Mike, that could be something that you could counsel with parking team. Strongly encourage the warning track rather than.
Yeah. I think, again, I understand what Aaron talked about, the way the city changed. And we don't put these through the justice court, we have the civil process. And because of that, we have a lot more discretion on, people call us, a lot of times we just, if they got a valid reason or can say, hey, you know what, I messed up or I did this. But my parking team's job is to enforce the law, right? They're, they're out there, these parking things, they're not just minor things. They may seem like minor things, but there's a reasoning why it's in state law, right? And their job is to either, by their discretion, issue a warning or a violation. But to that end, we have a lot more discretion at the city if someone was to appeal that citation to us. We're willing to work with those, which we do on a daily basis.
So is our first reaction a warning or like that, like the mayor's example? Is that guy going to do a ticket or a warning?
I can't tell you based on what I've trained my officer, yes. Initially, we always try to issue warnings first. But there might be situations that dictate that need a citation called for, right? I can't, I'm not going to take away their discretion and their ability to do their job. But I also will give them directions as far as, hey, this is what we want, you know, what Chief Adams wants, what the council wants, this is the direction we kind of want to go. Hey, let's issue some warnings first, let's try to, you know, educate, and which we've done. But at some point, a law still continues to be broken, we need to enforce it.
My other question is, how many, what percent of repeat offenders do we have? Because if you don't have a lot of repeat offenders, I don't know why we'd raise rates, yeah, unless we're.
Yeah. You'd be surprised, we actually have quite a few. You know, I think we have. Um, you know, I think we have one guy who's got eleven outstanding parking citations right now. Um, you know, that eventually will go to collections. Um, and so, yeah, there, there are several, um, of those repeat customers. You got one guy that parks every day in a neighborhood parking and the neighbor calls, the resident right in front of his, parks in front of his house. And guy calls every day and go down and issue a ticket and, yeah, so we'll send them to collections.
Because for me, I don't have a problem going, you know, twenty-five to forty or twenty-five to fifty, with things that seem like, I mean, like running a stop sign or speeding or things that you know these are wrong things. This parking the wrong way on the side of the street, that seems, I, I just still can't wrap my own front why that's a crime.
Well, and that's something that we can sit down with, you know, and, um, again, if there's certain ones that you say, hey, you know what? We would like to see a little more education on this and some warnings issued, you know, and get that message clear. But if the problem still continues, right, we need to correct the behavior.
Yeah, and, and just to provide some context, um, for, for other parking fines tend to be the very lowest within the food chain system or the traffic code. So for example, if you're, um, given a ticket for speeding five over, fine for that is a hundred and thirty dollars. So this is, this is still substantially lower than what you would, let's say, you know, if you're going to stop sign or a red light or, or paying the city, you know, that's a hundred and thirty dollar, uh, fine, all of those are. So, um, uh, again.
Also, they're mostly parking oriented, right?
I mean, these are parking only that we're dealing with, yeah. Um, things like parking in, in neighborhoods where we have our parking program where you can't because there, you know, your UV or whatever and students are parking there or people parking too close to stop signs or whatever, things like that. That is what this covers.
Yes, I see this more parking tickets, I would prefer a more instructional approach. So to me, the twenty-five dollars is an instructional approach, you know? You go out, you've already had your, you know, oh no, something's on my windshield and then I have to go left and you're kind of like, oh good, it's not a hundred bucks, you know? But I'm not going to do that again because I really don't want to get twenty-five dollars and I don't want to get a ticket. So I don't know, I'm okay with twenty-five, the handicap though, I don't have a problem with that one, just to me, that's just, you know, that's not the way I would park the wrong way on the street or.
I don't have a problem with the handicap or the safety concerns, the other ones, I'm a place ticket, whatever we brought to. The safety concerns, if you're parking too close to a stop sign, someone has to pull over, you may be having an accident, of course you need to help, give a reminder.
And then, and then, and then there is a factor, I mean, except for this parking the wrong way thing, but there is a factor of if people just park wherever and then they're okay paying twenty-five bucks because it's like going to a jazz game.
Yeah.
Because that depends on your income model.
I mean, if, yeah, people that keep doing it, keep doing it, then maybe who goes, it's, it's, yeah. And then it really, right, it, it's.
Do we have graduated scale, are they, you know, first offenses so much now? The type of things you get, is, is that, does that become too complicated to?
If that's something we can do, there, um, uh, absolutely so. Um, in, in, in the criminal law, like I said, which is where this came from, um, there are several offenses that have graduated effects depending on the number of offenses you committed in the past. And so we could write it such that, yeah, on a second, once you, on your second parking ticket, it's, you know, fifty dollars instead of twenty-five, you know, seventy-five or thirty. However it is, we just need direction from you in terms of how, how you want it structured so that we can write the ordinance and update the votes.
So Aaron and Mike, just quickly, in the software reviews to administer this program, is the graduated option, is, is there going to be way to do that administratively in the software?
I'm sure we, I'm sure we could, need a bump, but it wouldn't be a instant thing, right? It's.
It's not something that's.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to build it out, but I'm sure it could be.
So what if we, I don't think we're going to come to a resolution right, right this second, maybe. But I think what might make, and I know you guys want to get this.
So, but the timeliness issue here, sorry to interrupt, it's just that it, it needs to go in with the budget.
Okay, so what if we had like three state counselors that met with you guys and came up with some kind of a, this is what it is and then. So I want to go with a.
What do you need to vote by? That's your question.
That is a good question, where's our.
So the, the budget document will actually be presented to you next council meeting. So we can have the fees, let's say, for example, we can have the lesser twenty-five dollar fee for all general infractions and then a higher fee for safety infractions and then the highest fee for handicap accessible infractions. You can start there and if you wish to modify it thereafter, you can modify it thereafter. We just kind of need a base number to include in the budget.
Yeah.
And what I'm hearing from you, you know, relative consensus is, let's leave the, the kind of all infractions at twenty-five, the safety infractions at fifty and then the handicap infractions at a hundred and fifty.
What's your safety again? I just don't know, the cul-de-sac one, to me, that's just like parking the wrong way, a lot of people don't know that. So to me, although it is a safety concern, I think there's some education that needs to happen there.
So that would fall into the combined.
No, it's a safety issue.
They're saying it's a safety one though, is what.
Unless they, and the, the safety issue there, right, is if you have a fire truck that enters the cul-de-sac and needs to turn around and it can't because the car is speeding out.
Or just the standard.
Oh, it's not, it's a.
I see it why, it's a safety thing, but I also understand that, I talk to my neighbors about it and they're like, oh, I thought that time the car's in the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think that's a legitimate and, and a common point of view.
And that's why we did education for literally, well, we just started, I think issue is on it right now, but we might actually still be doing education. Uh, those are warnings and things that are written with a letter with the state code.
But, but I will, I will represent that it's, it's not just, for example, a fire issue, it's, uh, getting a snowplow into a cul-de-sac. It's, we, we deal with neighborhood disputes, uh, cars being parked there. I mean, I think Chief Adams can speak to, we've actually had fisticuffs resolved from people who parked that way, so.
If you're watching, you'd be, I'll add that on.
I, what if we said, the fire hydrant, to me, that's a no brainer. The thirty feet of a stop sign, to me, that's not a problem. Instructing traffic, I don't know what that is. And angle parking, if that's a cul-de-sac, then maybe we dump, drop them down.
So instructing, instructing traffic, is that?
But the fire hydrant, you got to get your.
Stick it down.
Yeah, a car, yeah, your car, your car has to go into the opposite lane of travel because the car is parked, you're double parked.
Okay, is that what instructing traffic is?
Well, people know how to do that too. So the only, the only one that I think you and I have a question on is the. The angle parking.
That's an easy switch right there.
And then Rick, our other violations is twenty-five?
Yeah, keep the other ones at twenty-five.
Yeah, keep them.
So you want to keep.
Then maybe we don't need a meeting, Mayor, if we can agree to that.
If everybody likes that? Is there anybody complaining about that?
I won't give that, I won't give that.
On the other violation, so if it's safety, I'm, I'm comfortable pumping it off. I mean, because there's other things we're not mentioning that would be.
Those are kind of the main ones that we identified. Um, if you come across with those, we will, I will email you collectively, say, hey, we've identified this as a safety, are you okay?
With a fifty dollar. It would, it would, it's the case that we wouldn't need to pass another resolution.
Yeah.
But if we get there.
Um, that's, yeah, that's, that's. When we get there, we can do that, I just, it's not as easy as just sending an email and saying.
But if I may.
Well, we are going to.
I mean, this is, we're not setting this in a stone tablet.
Not right now.
The next, the next budget session, we can continue to evaluate and you could come back to the council next year and say, hey, this particular concern is starting to become a very big problem and you can recommend an amendment to this. Or the twenty-five dollar situation is not changing behavior, we need to change behavior. Maybe it's thirty dollars or thirty-five or sixty-five, you have discretion, we're only talking about the next twelve months.
But if it's not changing behavior, that means you're.
Yeah, my representation is.
Exponentially, as we talked about.
If we continue to have like what the mayor's talking about, well, that's just not a big deal, that's what I paid for a jazz game. Then we're not changing behavior and then we need to strategize and say, okay, how can we?
Can, is there within thirty feet of a stop sign, are, is that curbed to the threshold or is it not sort of?
I don't know.
Is that, is that eliminated? I don't think it is, I think that's just in the, in the traffic code and something that you learn in my driving school or whatever.
It drives for a long period.
Yeah.
So, that's just a comment, because you're, you're an all, I, I want to say thank you, because you're trying to keep us safe. The, the thirty feet stop from a stop sign issue is, is a big problem in my neighborhood. And, and the guy that abuses it, parks a big truck right in front of her and people can't see the stop sign. And that's also a bus stop for the kids going to elementary school. So we appreciate what you do, I mean, we're all going back and forth on these different numbers, but you're, you're trying to keep us safe. And, and, and if you err on offending somebody sometime, you know, darn it, but, but that was a big one. Uh, parking and handicap, I walk or I lost it and I see people jump out of the handicap stall and run into Bosa. I'm going, you know, somebody, some paraplegic is not going to be able to get in there today. I mean, those, those kind of things I think are, are terrible. So, thank you for what you do.
I think we do want that repeat offender, so I think, I think that's a component that, you can add that component.
So, so would we like, I mean, to determine exactly what those numbers would be or?
I, I think that's. It sounds like maybe that's something we can look at next year.
In the future.
Uh, as, as.
I think what the, the general conversation was, second offense is twenty-five more, third offense, twenty-five more than that,
fourth offense, twenty-five more than that, is that.
Oh, okay, double.
Or just double.
Twenty-five, fifty, to a hundred, to.
I'll just add the twenty-five. If, but you have to put them on the ticket, right? With this at the end, please put it.
Yeah, we, we can make that part, yes.
It normally doesn't say that on there, it just says.
Or it will be, yes.
Can it? I mean, to me, that would, that would stop them, that may be a deterrent, uh, twenty-five bucks, no deal, but next time it's going to be fifty.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I.
Put on a regular traffic citation.
Yeah, it would be done.
But, but do you want to keep, but do you want to keep doubling forever? If this guy with, if this guy with like thirteen tickets or whatever is going to be like in jail.
So right.
Yeah.
I would think we'd be on a tie or something.
Let's talk about that.
So can we do that, can we just double it and call it a day?
For a repeat offender?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes.
What about repeat?
Just, keep it at the. Fifty dollar rate. I mean, we can change it next year.
Yeah, we'll, we'll write it up that way and we can reevaluate.
I've got four more here. It will be eight thousand.
Okay, so, so we need to wrap this up? Okay, so are we, to a consensus, can, can you summarize what we decided?
Sure, so. All right, so ADA handicap violation is going to increase from one fifty from one hundred. Safety concern violations like fire hydrants, within thirty feet of a stop sign and obstructing traffic minus angle parking will go from fifty, that is currently at twenty-five for a first violation. All other violations that are currently twenty-five will remain at twenty-five, including angled parking. We'll also build in a late fee schedule into these, for, after fourteen days it's not paid, twenty-five percent late fee will be assessed. Uh, it will also, for a repeat offender, the, uh, price will double to twenty-five for standard violations. The safety concern will double from fifty to a hundred.
Is that repeat offender thing, is that like annually or is that like forever?
So you get, well, so if you get.
Same location.
Great question, right, I mean, same violation, right, I mean, that's.
And against the town to administration. Because if you do it annually, then you guys are going to have to track who's got the parking ticket, what offense is going to be within the twelve month period. So administratively, that makes this program more difficult. Not, not impossible, but more difficult to enforce.
I think the credit will be enough though.
Yes.
And on the angled and the reg, uh, other violations, education first. And that's been the standard for our program from day one.
Right, angled, that's saying park the wrong way, I mean.
You are really caught up on that, park the wrong way.
My neighbors are always parked angled, I, I never knew it was an issue.
I understand.
It is until it is, right?
Right.
Okay, so I, I do have prob, kind of a problem with the fire lane one, because if two of the schools that my kids have gone to, they have parked, they have painted things red, uh, just because they don't want parents parking and walking in the school. So it's not necessarily a fire lane. Um, in fact, one of them, the principal always said, this is just during school hours and you guys can then come out there because there's other parking. So then we go to the school play and we come out, there's fifteen cars with tickets on them, because they park where, um, it's continuing to red. So, um, do you have a solution for that?
It depends on who paints it red.
Yeah, I mean, all that stuff has to be done with, in, uh, works with like David Corbusch down at the city, they keep track of everything like that. So if it's designated, I'll, I'll, I guess, to answer your question, I will follow him and make sure that he has a conversation with the schools and making sure that they're not painting red for the show. So, okay, based off of what Heather's saying, my suggestion would be we hold up on the doubling, uh, because that is going to be a logistical nightmare for right now. Start out with the twenty-five for all, fifty, and then see where that goes.
I guess if he just keeps getting the tickets.
Yeah, I mean, he's getting another ticket for another fifty, right, or he or she.
And we can, we can evaluate.
What about that, evaluate in six months?
And I, and I think the big thing on, on evaluating it is what Jerry was saying, which is the number of repeat offenders. If you got a lot of repeat offenders, you probably need to double it, but we can do that next year.
We, I'll start tracking that, well, I easily can track that, right? In six months, I'll give you a report of what violations have been issued citations for, all the way down on every violation, so you can see those. Um, and I'll give you a list of repeat offenders and then we can have a further discussion into next year.
Okay, is everybody in favor of that? Is anybody against it? No, then.
Aaron will put something together and we'll see in a month or three, some other.
Thank you. All right. Next item together, we've got city branding.
Mayor, can I just offer an introduction to this conversation? Yes, we're pleased to have Brooks Advertising with us this, this afternoon. A number of years ago, the city engaged in a, a rebranding effort and, uh, that led to changes in the city's logo and we created a new style guide. When, um, when we had a term of elected officials at the beginning of this calendar year, there was intent expressed that we'd take a look at, uh, re-emphasizing the words family city USA as part of our overall messaging to the community. And that included the communications that we have in our, obviously, our internal and our external communications, but also it involves, uh, the messaging that we have on vehicles throughout the community, so on and so forth. So we reached out again to Peter and his team who helped us, uh, back in, I think it was two thousand and sixteen.
He has the best logo in the state, if you ask me.
Yeah, we, we re-engaged with, with Peter.
We're not a pair on that, are we? So I love the logo.
And I said, let's, the council wants to take another look, or not another, they want to take a look at enhancing what we're doing, can you begin working with us? And so we have started down this path of working with Brooks Advertising again, uh, as it relates to messaging and including the family city USA message in our communications going forward. So we wanted to give you an update today as to where we are in relation to that effort and to provide Peter and his team an opportunity to share some of the thoughts and research that they have been doing relative to this messaging.
Sounds good, perfect.
So we're going to start with a test, Mayor.
Okay.
And everybody has to participate in this, okay? This is branding, this is my life, I've had my own advocacy since nineteen eighty-four, Southern California. Worked with many cities, including Alamo, Lehigh, Eagle Mountain and other places. So here's, here's the test, what is the brand for Smoke and the Provo?
Welcome home.
How did you know that?
Um, I've seen it on signs, I've seen it on their.
How many else, who else, who else in this room knew that?
Oh, we all want to look smart now.
Okay, no, 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 okay, now, we're going to, we're going to go to something a little harder and see if you're really paying attention here. American Fork.
Hello.
Utah. Okay, that's one of you, you're okay, you stay in the meeting.
No, I know it too.
No, 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 you are already, you are already, you've got, there's no prizes, there's no prizes for this. Helper. Helper, Helper's the hub of carbon. So we got hubs everywhere in the state here, just a couple more here. Um, oh, this is an easy one, Springbough.
Arts.
Yeah, yeah. They've done well with that and how, how can they did well with it? What have they done?
It's here a lot, certainly.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's everywhere. Here's one, you'll, you, if you, anybody gets this one, you get another prize, Pleasant Row.
Strawberry Fields. The Gardens.
City of Trees.
Tree.
Yeah. City of Trees.
And London's a little bit country.
Strawberry Fields.
Is it, is it a little bit country?
Yeah, I know.
No, see, here's the, here's the problem.
Bad roads.
What was that, was that, sorry, ooh, ooh, ooh. Was that, where's it underlined, Joe Diamond?
Oh, he said bad roads. I said a little bit country.
Okay, okay, okay. We had a big videotape.
I know, it's trash.
Okay.
McDonald's.
Well, here's, one more, one more. Do you know, uh, Camus? It's the gateway to, you, you, and stuff like that. How do they do it?
You pick something that makes sense for your city and then you brand it.
You, you pick something that makes sense. You folks did this in eighty-five. I've, I've lived in Orem. Well, I moved here from Hawaii in nineteen seventy-six, and my mom still lives here. And back in ninety-five, my friend, Nora Nielsen, uh, was a friend of the family here in Hawaii, and, and in Orem. He's the one that kind of introduced that with, with the, the events that were going on here. Then it kind of petered out. Um, in our research, we found out that Orem is still known as Family City USA, especially if you're a crossword puzzle guy. Uh, cause it, it's still out there. So how do you do it? You do it slowly and carefully, and you don't change your message again and again and again and again. I'm surprised you knew Provo, because they changed their- And we don't wanna change our mind. If, if we are committed to doing Family City USA, um, we're gonna be doing it the right way. Show them the right way. Oh, this is Jake, he's the art director.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm also the creator of the logo.
Oh, God, okay, no, I created the logo.
No, it's you.
Thanks to Jake, Jacob Fizz. So, please don't go opening all the pages, okay? Can we do the, let's do it one at a time, and love your input on this. And if you have ideas, there's no bad ideas in doing this kind of stuff. Um, the rule number one is, is that you, you need to view this slogan as kind of like you're planting a seed, and it's gonna grow and get better and better over time. Uh, one of my friends was the chief financial officer for In-N-Out Burger. They've not changed their message since nineteen forty-eight. And we don't wanna change our message, so, does everybody know, have, all's right. Alright. So what you're seeing is the effect of conversations, our research, doing multiple ideas. We're starting off with the logo and what we think the logo ought to look like. Jacob, you're gonna come up here and explain why we're doing it this way.
Put me on the spot here.
Before you start, you can start with Jake. Just one thing. For the last couple of years, you've been using that, um, that swash thing, people, you call that, the banner type thing, which we've been emphasizing the year that, that Orem was founded. Um, we're probably, we, we don't want multiple messages out there. Right now, we're Family City USA, okay? And so it's probably gonna go away. And you have thoughts about that, we'll talk about that later.
Better centennial manner, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So usually when we create a logo, we do a style guide. That's purely because, once you create a brand, it evolves into something hairy, like Frankenstein, within five, ten years. Um, I've noticed Orem has done a really excellent job at retaining that brand throughout. So, even, even the, you know, the signage with the centennial, you guys did okay with that, but. So, I wanted to retain your logo without messing it up too much, honestly, because it's such a great logo. I've, I've seen it on everybody's shirts, bags, and, um, by adding this subtle font, as you can see, it, it does an excellent job of portraying who you guys are. And do you guys wanna just follow me throughout?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's fine, next page.
So, are you asking for one or two, or whatever?
So, it's, again, it's, it's, it's both, and it depends on the application, as you'll see. So, business cards, as you can see, I, I do want Family City USA to be forefront on your business cards. I don't want it necessarily to be hidden, I want it to be, to stand out, and if you guys have any objection to that, you can sit in as well.
You can pretty go on. This is an interesting topic, the city, the topic of family. It's a real common, um, it, it, it's a safe theme to an extent. Um, however, keep in mind that more, that more of your citizens are, are single than they are part of the family. We, we are now in a single universe right now, but still, single people wanna be part of a, a family, so it has vocal meanings and reach, so keep going.
Sure. And honestly, we're just going through this. I, I wanna demonstrate visually what this would look like, because obviously, people have their own idea of what it could be, but even the welcome sign, at first, I was a little hesitant. I'm like, oh, maybe they won't see it, but honestly, the markup demonstrates that it does work. Just, you know, next page as well, as you can see on the website. It's subtle, but I, I feel like, if we're gonna go gung ho and throw on banners and everything, we're sort of getting into tricky waters on, you know, identity and, you know, who's part of that family, right? So we're gonna, we're gonna sort of come back a little bit and, um, introduce this subtly, if that makes sense. Peter asked me to make a sticker for, I don't know why, just to demonstrate as well.
I have stickers, I can, you have a sticker on that.
Oh, sure. And then you can see on the utility bill as well. So, uh, it's, it's, it's a subtle thing, but I, I think it's, it's a good direction that you guys should be taking, so.
I have a question. It's still gray like Orem and the-
Yeah.
Can, can we ever make it blue or something else?
No. From a balance standpoint, sure, you can. Um, I, 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 I think retaining the, the steel gray looks aesthetically more pleasing, because when you start throwing in other colors, your eyes are sort of gonna be, nope, okay.
But what if I wanna emphasize that?
So when you say emphasize, what do you mean by that?
Well-
Like make it larger?
Like Orem's big and you already, but if I want to draw attention to the family city, and I made that a blue color that was starting out.
Sure. So, give me a specific, um, scenario on which you would want to emphasize Family City. Cause that is, that's what you're, like, if we're gonna put on a banner, it would be larger, right?
I'm, I'm over Summer Fest, and to me, that's our greatest family activity we do.
I think there's a way to, okay, would you put it like on a banner, say, or?
I'd put it on magazine.
Okay, magazine.
Could be a van. I'm just saying, I mean, we may not do, but what if I wanna emphasize that part?
From what it sounds like you're saying is that maybe it's a little too subtle for you, is that what you're saying?
I just want the option.
You want the option?
Okay, I'll let you out there. Do you wanna make-
So maybe just an alter-, alternative. What if I'm the Parks Department?
Sure.
And I wanna put Family City USA green, or I'm in the Fire Department, I wanna put Family City USA red, or I'm the Police Department, I wanna put it in blue.
Here's the difficult, do you guys have a, a, an in-house designer?
Pete.
Hey, Pete, if you wanna talk to me, we can, and brush off ideas, whatever, that's totally fine. I am afraid that Pete's gonna die tomorrow, and you're gonna get, I'm kidding. Somebody's gonna get involved in it, and they're gonna go, it's not gonna be cohesive, it's not gonna be repetitive, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be a different color, you're not gonna realize when, you know, it doesn't have that same brown.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to hijack this discussion.
No, 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 I love it, I love it. Pushing back, I love it.
No, no, let me, let me tell you what, what's gonna happen. So eighty-four, I start, I start with T-squares, X-acto knives, colored pencils, and things like that. Eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, computers started coming out, and everybody thought they had a great designer. Now, as far as everybody, we give you your logo, and we're gonna also give you some rules that you have to follow with these logos. Because everybody wants to change it. Case in point, Gerber Construction is a client, a few years ago, we did their logo. We head over to the Lehigh Roundup Rodeo, those suckers put it in pink, and then they squished it down, because somebody got their hands on it and said, I, we need to fit this. They should've called us up and said, what do we do for this banner? I says, first of all, you don't add a color that's unapproved.
Think of every brand that you know. I mean, there is some evolution to the brand, obviously. You're not gonna see a McDonald's logo squished and, and not recognizable, that doesn't feel like McDonald's, right? So how do we do that? And that's very subjective, and I'm, I'm not the one. If you wanna do it, let's get to a, you know, a triangle, we'll, we'll talk about it.
We're not gonna lie to you, FedEx. FedEx made a mistake, here we are, a little peanut-laden agencies. They should've stuck with their original two colors, but they wanted to get a ground color, an air color, international color. The, we are in the over-communicated business now, and, and we got so much coming at us. When two thousand four, when Facebook came, now we got that coming at us, electronic stuff. So we, we, what we're doing here is we're planting the seed, and we will help you with, with-
What if I, what if I just want a blue and not red, or green, or purple?
You'll have to ask us for permission.
Who has read the style guide, by the way? You've looked through it?
There's one guy in the middle here.
Let me, let me, okay, let me tell you, page, I think around ten or eleven, there's a, there's a page dedicated, what you should and should not do to the Orem logo. And it is, what's that?
There's examples.
There's examples of what you should not be doing, because I have, everybody in the design field have found that when people get it, who's not familiar with the software, they don't know how to proportionally make a logo, right? They'll add a shadow, somehow thinking it will emphasize it, or they'll make it larger and it will somehow, so it's, it's, how do we retain your logo? Look, I'm looking around, you literally have a puzzle that has retained the look, like he didn't mess it up. Whoever, who's the artist, I don't know.
Eric Dowd.
Dowd. So, um, yeah, so, that's, that's all I'll say about it.
I should, well, just, this, I, I get it, I support keeping the same colors. I mean, McDonald's doesn't change their color, their art's colors, I, I, I support that. Page two, and, and I'd love to hear your opinion about this, and hopefully this is gonna be changed. Can you imagine a city that's the, a commercial hub for the county having a metal sign like that? Isn't that pretty ugly?
Yes.
Oh, or you're looking at the Winston sign.
Are you, are you talking about the?
The intent.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just talking about that, these are replacements.
If, if I may.
Substantial.
Oh, no, 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 yeah, no. So here's, here, this is, this is to give you ideas, so it sounds to me like you have some ideas on what could make the sign better. And that's good, I want the years to go.
But, but the, the city's already done it other places, I'm just-
Yeah.
We, and, and Terry, we completely agree, and we are budgeting for replacement and creation of these monuments.
Right, I would hate to-
Far more to skip good.
I would hate to spend four hours making a beautiful monument sign for no reason other than, you know, we don't all agree, right? So it's like, I, I completely agree, because I think you have it, is it on?
On, it's on.
You have some beautiful, you have some beautiful, and I completely agree.
Yeah, but the one on Center Street needs a little bit of help. That line was designed a little squishy, and so maybe we add it underneath it or whatever.
Quite honestly, as you can tell, this is actually a Google map, a Google map picture. I wanted to demonstrate that the words themselves could be legible.
I get it.
And I, and I, I will, I'm not in charge of making the sign, so you guys will have to decide.
So maybe just to note about that Center Street sign, that is actually modest since that was done by a developer.
Oh, I've always hated that sign.
You weren't following it.
They weren't following the guy. No, they weren't, no, it's funny, you should say that, because they weren't.
Well, it's not, almost as bad as Twitter, except the one on University Parkway that was designed in nineteen seventy-two.
Hey, uh, no, but don't, we are, we are in the process of, of replacing these.
Sure. Yeah, we, keep in mind, too, when we redesigned your logo several years ago, it was a very gentle thing. I don't know if it wasn't across the face, we just, oh, it looks so nice now.
Well, I mean, and we, we retained elements of the old ones, so honestly, it was a Trojan horse.
You know, we're, we're reigniting something that's already in people's hearts. So I quizzed my eighty-four-year-old mother, what's the slogan? My mom, it's Family City USA, that's why I'm here, son. No, I'm here because you forced me to be your mom, you know? Yeah, it's already, it's already-
So why not blue? Why not?
Um, I, I haven't even-
City USA.
We, we could try it. I, I don't, I don't mind, you know, look, going down the avenue. Gray is sort of a neutral color. So it, it fits everywhere, you know, and could you imagine, you know, wearing a blue hat every day? Doesn't, doesn't fit with everything, do you know what I mean? So.
Oh, I know, I think blue's neutral.
Okay. I think navy is, you know, technically, in this, yeah, yeah.
Small goal.
In design, they actually say navy blue is a, is a neutral. This is not navy blue. This is like BYU in your face blue.
But, but, but this is why, like, if you go in everyone's house here, the walls are with colors.
Sure, thank you, yeah.
But as far as a constant, we gotta have a constant.
Yeah, I get it.
And that's, that's all I wanted to do. Like, if we wanna make it fun with the Fire Department or whatever, I don't see anything wrong with that. I'm just saying, I don't want people to go crazy with it, start, you know, start adding drop shadows and, and messing with it.
I, I, I do think you get a really nice look with these.
Yeah.
I told you.
See, that's what I'm saying, so there, there's, the problem, the, the reason I made it so small was because of the length of it. It's a long thing to say, Family City USA, and so, if you do it too bulky and too big, it's, the weight proportionally doesn't look well, so.
What do you think of everything when we do these kind of things? For example, the proper English in this would be capital F, capital, um, Z, sorry, comma, U dot, S dot, you know, this is, this is design, this is messaging. So, the proper way of doing it is Family City USA, all in one word. Little things like that, the kerning, the letting, the way things are put together. Um, somebody suggested that we took, put it right below the Orem and move the ocean, I mean, the, the lake down. It's done, good.
Good, good.
So, right, I personally, I like it, I like the simplicity of it. Um, anytime you're trying to communicate a message, you've got that long. A billboard on the freeway, true. Uh, cereal boxes in the grocery store, uh, book covers on a bookshelf. Wherever you are, you've got that, just that short amount of time to communicate that message. And the old adage of keep it simple, stupid, I think this applies very well. This is simple, it's beautiful, it's elegant, and, uh-
And you're, I'm also utilizing the style guide in that, I'm using the same fonts. It's, it's, it's a corporate vibe, but it still, you know, retains a-
Years ago, we were asked by Eagle Mountain to do their branding. We were not hired. They didn't want, they didn't like what I said. It's okay, that's a long story, I'll get over it in a minute here. However, they had a budget of like a hundred grand or something. Do you guys remember all the billboards that they were doing, and all the promoting for Eagle Mountain? Nobody does. Nobody, nobody knows where Eagle, nobody cares, because they, they have a message that resonated, and this resonates. We are kind of resurrecting something that's already been there, and now it's just gonna be generally put out there, yeah, oh, yes, Family City USA. So we're not making-
I really like this. This is, I pulled out mine, right, and I'm, I'm really like it.
You will get the first new business cards then. I don't know who you are, but you'll get the business card.
Debbie answered, but this is right about Provo, so she should be fairly acquainted.
No, and I'm only asking what it would look like in blue. That's, um, I, I don't mean to-
Do you have, give me your, give me your email address, I'd be happy to send it.
I just, I'll look at, maybe it's not gonna look as-
You're totally fine.
Are you a, are you a city councilwoman?
Yes.
Oh, then we'll give you whatever you like. I said, no, don't censor anything.
Don't censor anything.
No, I just wanna know what it looks like.
Yeah.
That's it. I don't want a multi-colors, I just wanna look at it.
Totally fair. By the way, so what does the roll-out look actually like? Do you give a roll-out right now to?
Well, uh, website, it's easy, um, with, with Pete, that's, ooh, put that up there. Business cards, a little pricey, because you gotta print them all again. We do your business cards printing, so we can do those, um. The signage is your most expensive thing. In fact, you know, my original proposal, um, we were a little too gung ho. We were gonna spend millions of your dollars. We used to be the ad agency for Thanksgiving points. We wanted a million-dollar sign like they had. Jamie said, you're not getting that. And so, we're, we're gonna do it.
So you do perfection.
For example, thanks for throwing me in this, buddy. Like, we have been, we have banners along some of our key corridors that we have partnered with UBU. And a, a number of them have come down, a number of them are ratty. And I've been waiting for this, so that we can put, for example, these rebranded banners on our, our two.
Put on the light bulbs and-
Yes, yes. So, or we could take this and we can work with our paint crews, and you've seen this, for example, where we put down, uh, UVU on, on the roadway. We put it on Provo, Provo, they have BYU on the roadway. We can do this on the roadway. Uh, we have our Summer Fest coming up, and so we have branding that we put on shirts and things like that. We can start doing that with this. So, we, we don't do it all at once, but just as activities and programs and projects continue to come forward, then we do this, and when Debbie needs new business cards, and we work with new business cards, when we need new stationery, then we work with stationery with this. And things like the website, we can do that tomorrow. But some of these things are gonna take a little time.
Well, that, that electronic video, that's gonna have an impact, right?
Yeah.
I mean, the website, the emails, the Facebook.
Yeah, you have twenty-one thousand dollars on Facebook, you have ten thousand on Instagram, I think, you know, yeah. Two thousand, less five hundred on, on Twitter now, right?
And we don't have to make a big deal out of it. I mean, meaning, meaning, I want people to know it, but I don't wanna be, we're Family City USA. I wanna, I wanna slide it in and people like-
Here's the principle, in marketing, pay attention, because this is, this is years of experience. You always start from within. You always start with this group, and this group likes it, then we move it out electronically, and then we move it out to Citizens of Orem, then the rest of the world, I don't really care about. I mean, because the best marketing is always word of mouth. We want my moms of the world saying, yes, Family City USA.
And I, I, I want it to be the, the boiling water frog analogy. By the time they're boiling, they, they don't even know that they've already been, you know, indoctrinated to it.
But, but do we totally want it that way, or do we want to, and say, we are rebranding, Family City USA, and we're moving forward?
You mean for like the banners and stuff? That's a good, good example?
Yeah, I mean, you could.
What kind of image, what kind of imagery would we do for that?
I, this, this, that would be kind of the tough part here, too. Um, we were thinking of, yeah, an introductory statement. For example, let me tell you a real-life story. My grandfather, his name is Samuel Brooks, first student at Dixie State University. They renamed the bison, Brooks the Bison. Okay, that's my kind of thing, that's my genealogy. And they had a kind of introductory pamphlet that said, why is it called Brooks the Bison? Well, Samuel Brooks slept on the steps, and, uh, he was the first student, and his, his relative was Juanita Brooks. All that against me. All that against me, she's a wonderful woman. Yeah, yes, yeah, and a lot of other great books too, but what what they did was.
That's fine, Brody.
This is, it's a long story. Um, we we've got to, how do you tell the story carefully? Again, this is a universal topic, family, and we can think about it.
Yeah, I just, I wanna make sure we're at least starting the process.
Yeah, we're starting to look, now, this is the the foundation of the message, basically.
Just to comment about, just I'm thinking about another area, Seth. Because it's, we're not changing the logo, we're just adding three words. It's not like it's a different, but it would be kind of cool if like for the Summer Fest, if if the city council and city staff, we all get shirts anyway. If there's, if the shirts at that time do say Family City USA, and our hats, Family City USA, uh, banners in the parade. I mean, it's just, it's just a subtle thing that's been added to the logo. I mean, I think that'd be pretty cool to come out of that point.
Well, and the banners too, I mean, if they're in need of change, I think it only makes sense to do that.
Two two things, I'm sorry. So, so, sorry, go ahead. A little birdie in my ear, Josh, why don't we change Summer Fest? Because that doesn't make sense either. It's about summer festival, Family City City, tie something to.
Or you're saying like a family fest or something?
Can I say something about that? So I served on the Summer Fest.
Yes, you can.
Um, so it used to be the Miss Oran, or excuse me, the Miss Utah pageant night parade that was held in Oran. And then we transitioned to the City of Oran Family Summer Fest and and turned it into a two day thing. So it, so it, there was a time when it was called the City of Oran Family Summer Fest.
That's a beautiful, open account.
So it's Family Summer Fest?
That's that's a lot.
How long has it been, sorry, I'm for Provo, how how long has uh, Summer Fest been around?
Like eighty years.
Eighty years?
Yeah.
So the the name Summer Fest has been around, but don't change, don't change.
It's changed, it used to be Oran days.
Right, but when was that?
When we were kids.
Okay, so the fifth.
That was sixty.
Sixty.
Okay, terrible.
Carry the one, you guys, gals, guys.
Okay, this, this is exactly what happens when you have a committee putting things like this together. And brainstorming's wonderful, and and I'm I'm not writing anything down right now, Brad, take some notes from me, would you? I mean.
He's got everything right here.
He's on that, it's amazing. So what we do is we take all these wonderful ideas, do we, how do we have family this Summer Fest? And do we even nick around with someone that's eighty years old? You know, and again, these have had their own lives, their own. Do we change the name of Sarah Theater? Do we sponsor Sarah Family Theater? You know, I, uh, uh.
Family City USA came from Sarah Theater.
Yes, Brad. I think maybe we state what I, I think part of what we're trying to say is Oran's always been Family City USA. And so rather than trying to make this act like it's something new, I'm just trying to say, we've always been this way. Just don't it. Um, so what we're doing right now is all these brainstorming ideas are wonderful, now we gotta figure out what we're gonna be doing. I I was talking originally to Jamie, the guys, I said, I want a bloomer, I want a woman coming out of a cake, you know, dropping down into the stadium fire. A family, USA all over, no, no, that's a good idea, it's an idea.
It's an idea.
Right, so, and again, also on the design, okay, so ideas number one, there's unlimited ideas. Right now, we are at the starting point here, we're kind of wanting your, like, I guess we're wanting approval.
I'm just testing, I'm testing the waters and it sounds like everybody is sort of on the same page.
We're okay there. Um, the second thing about the design of it, once we're in the design, the 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 two guys up here with the Nazis on the wall. Do you know, you, this is the way we do our logos, so how do we do it for you? We'll make you happy.
I just want.
I just wanna see a blood.
I I agree with her, that's the first two.
Yeah, well, there's two, there's two of them.
And maybe the women and us are coming out, but that's important.
Yeah, I think the the color of it, you know.
So, anyway, one point is.
I like it, I like it.
Well, we'll collect these ideas, we're not gonna do them all, I mean, for budget, we're doing doing the easy things first. Animals are impactful, you always ask, okay, is this gonna make any difference at all? For example, we have a lapel pin on there. Yeah, they're cool, I think it'll do anything.
Here's, here's one thing I was concerned with coming in here was it's gonna peter out after this, right? I show you this, everything's great, and then you guys let it die. But I I love your idea of on the street, I love the idea of the banners, to to slowly, you know, crank it up over the next couple of years.
How expensive is it to do those window stickers? Cheap, I mean, is that something we could give out at Summer Fest stores?
You know? Yeah, when I say cheap, they're like business cards almost, if you get them in bulk, um, yeah. Can't do magnets right now, there's a supply chain of magnets, so you don't get any magnets. And and we, and Pete has been very good about kind of creating, I call it swag, that we share with the public. And so we see that in and around town. We essentially give that swag to our customers, our residents, and maybe become our advertising.
Exactly.
Right, and and I I will also represent that in recent years, we have tried to make a greater effort in emphasizing the word family. So for example, when we built the new fitness center, we intentionally called it the Oran Family Fitness Center. And when we, for example, are going to have activities in the park or a concert series, we can package it as the Oran Family Concert Series. Or the Oran uh, Family Carvis Festival, or. So we can, in a very, I guess you could say, soft way, introduce that word where it doesn't feel forced.
Right.
And it doesn't feel in your face. And and I think that's what is good about this, is it's subtle and elegant and it starts to communicate or re-communicate a message that people already know in their minds and in their hearts, and now we're just kind of restating it in a more, I guess you'd say, direct way. There's some good news too, and this is kind of interesting news in our research, very few, if any, cities in the United States are using family in the name. I just couldn't find them.
It'll be memorable then.
See, I wish you guys went like Las Vegas, that's easy to pull. You know, what happens in Oregon stays in Oregon. Or, I live in Southern California, Huntington Beach is Surf City, USA. And they don't even have the best surf, it's on Oahu where I used to live, so. Anyway, what I'm saying is, it's a, it's a wonderful theme, um, I I hope it's all inclusive, because a family is not a family's family, you know what I mean? So. Yeah, should we change this summer, like Summer Family Fest?
I think like Oran Family.
Well, I mean, I I think, I mean, we have actually held our last Summer Fest meeting here, so.
Is the back getting done?
No, but it's close.
If if we are going to head down that path, I would suggest let's, let's make plans to do it next year. I thought we were changing the brand, I mean, that's maybe something.
It's a pretty strong brand, I'll be completely.
Must, but all of the stuff that comes from Summer Fest will have the new logo on it, right? I mean, you have a new logo on the catalog, maybe on the magazine, the banners, the all that stuff. We have to do.
If you are, if you are collectively comfortable with what, you know, has been presented, then we can, we can vote it up on, to the mayor's point, on electronic resources this week.
Electronics is expensive and really impactful, so you get a lot of value from your budgets there.
What we wanna do is get the plate spinning, keep that one going, you know, just.
Yeah.
I think we all like.
But I'm gonna go back to the beginning of my thing here, you passed the test pretty well without cheating. Um, you've got to be committed to this, don't call me up in a year and a half and say, oh, I'm tired of family, let's do something else.
Okay, we're committed, so we just need to, we, I think everybody likes it.
Yeah.
And I know it's centers, right?
Yeah.
I think it's great, so I think what we need now is just to kind of map out the plan going forward and what that looks like over some time.
And we can, our communications team, we can sit down with with the Brooks advertising team and and come to you with a, hey, this is, these are the ten things we're gonna do in six months, these are the ten things we're gonna do thereafter, and so.
Yeah, hope to see it soon.
If you're gonna do Summer Fest, when, when, what's your drop date? Friday.
Hey, we're ready, we're ready.
I I don't think, I don't think we can repackage Summer Fest, you know, in seventy two hours. I I think we need to, I think we need to say, okay, this is where we're at, but this is where we're going and make plans to appropriately go there.
You don't think we could, we have this logo?
No, I'm not saying the logo.
No, I'm asking the Summer Fest magazine that logo.
Yeah.
And I said, why can't you just send that logo out?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a little.
That's what I'm saying, it's a tablet, it's an email and a copy and paste, pretty much on the trip.
There.
Just to clarify what Jamie's saying, the company I used to work for, we, you know, we bought some other companies and every time we've kind of changed this and that. But but the policy was, use up what you've got in the office and then we'll, we'll, it probably makes sense in the city too. Because we don't need to have stat rings of paper now, we're, they're, we throw away that, say, Family City. I think I'm going here as a.
Now, you know, now if you want new business cars within limited reason, we can do that, that's not a problem. And and all of the the future, you know, clothing and all, we can do that. But changing out the street signs, things like that, that that is something that we would prefer to do.
Over time.
Over time, and even our fleet, we get new fleet, we need to mark our new fleet, we're marketing the family city USA.
And when are you gonna buy that million dollar sign that I watched you buy?
That's next week's.
Okay, okay, we'll come back to that.
All right, so I think we're gonna have to move forward, but I think everybody likes that.
Cancelled before.
We'll work with you to try and figure out a schedule of how to roll this out.
Sounds great, great job. Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Very good. Okay. Next, we're gonna talk about the city hall where we're at. Lake Grace.
Yes.
These guys are kidding.
Good afternoon to you all. Hey, where are the guys that bring all the fun stuff, right? Mayor, city council, thank you for the opportunity to bring me up to date on a little project you may have heard about, that of the city center. As you know, we teamed up with Method Studio for the architectural design of this new building. Uh, Method Studio, a stranger to the city of Oran, at least, they designed here the library, and also the fitness center. We're excited to team up with them again and have another very successful project. So representing Method tonight, this afternoon, Joe Smith, Mark Hesler, and Jay Tarr. I'm gonna turn the time to these gentlemen to provide the information they prepared for us, and then we'll go from there for a presentation. So this is actually the presentation that's gonna be after this one.
Is this the?
This is not, this is.
Okay.
So if we, they, they're, can they just put their machine in here? You don't have the presentation.
Oh, I don't have it, okay. Um, this is pulling through Zoom, so deliver this on Zoom, one people will see it. If it's not on, it's.
So they could email it to me, I'll put it in the presentation folder, but you can.
Okay. Okay.
Remember I said, I'm on this here.
Yeah, I'm in the inbox. I would be delighted to answer. I'm connected and we do a board.
I'm gonna connect to the new authority. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Joe, can we just emphasize real quick what Rob just said? Constructibility isn't necessarily whether we can or can't. Although in some cases it might be a little bit. It's more the effect it has on the cost of building new.
So yeah, you can see in this option there is more trees that are... So for parking, maybe before we were having to replace the parking that was in here. Some stalls because you have to score for the... So this is going to be stalls and we lost four seats. So they don't take in the difference because it's worth for the gender sound requirements. If it came really straightforward.
I can go along with it if you need to.
And I think, if I may, I think whatever option you select is one that is going to impact to some degree the trees on the campus. So I don't think there's one alternative unless we literally build on top of great footprint that you're currently... Can you go to three? That we're going to be able to eliminate all the tree.
A lot more money. Curves.
Curves? Yeah, then your focal point is the future here. The other thing that I like about this organization, Joe, is it's less emphasized on the western face. Whereas I think for me, if you work in this building in the middle of summer, you do feel that.
This is just the formalization of the presentation that emergency manager Lee Stevenson gave.
They could prove it then, couldn't they?
Yeah, this is just the formalization of that.
Okay, so do we, is the resolution just?
Ah, yeah, exactly.
Okay. All right, and then we've got scheduled items, 9.1.
Kenny Kenneshaw.
And this is the required second public hearing that is necessary as part of the federal seat. So, Mr. Raisin, the chair of the committee, and Ken will be here to speak to you.
So is this gonna, you have a motion on this in the vote?
Yes, yes.
For this time, we will.
Yes.
We gotta use some kind of flyer word.
A bunch of words.
Yeah. All right, well, it looks like pretty straight up.
Yeah, I have a bet over under on 640 right now, Mayor.
We'd like, we would like to take your picture with the mayor, if that's okay. Um, I have a lovely phone. Oh, I'll stay here so the, the plus one.
One, two, three.
Yeah, thank you so much. So, um, we really appreciate your leadership in natural resource conservation and just being a model for how businesses across Orem can be really good stewards. Thank you. Uh, so we have another award tonight, and that's for a private individual. Um, that's the next slide. So this is really exciting. This is our first year honoring an individual and their stewardship. Amazingness. So Tara Bishop is here, and she'll be getting this award.
One, two, three.
Yeah, um, from what I hear, I'm meeting Tara for the first time, but she's just, um, a really active citizen and really is always thinking about sustainability and stewardship. So thanks, Tara. And thank you all for letting us have a few minutes.
And, um, yeah, just, just, just to note, right, this was up there on the slide, but I am just very impressed that Clean Fills Utah, been in business since 2007, and has helped Utah drivers save about 10 million gallons of gas. That's a, that's a lot of gas and a lot of money. So, thank you, Derek. And, uh, and, and, uh, I, I just met Tara, um, and I just think that's marvelous. Uh, you know, same kind of impact, different, different kind of impact, but the same, same community impact in educating our children and, uh, and us in a wise use of resources. That's our report. Uh, happy to have questions if you have any, but thank you for your support and working with us on all these issues.
I, I just want to say one thing, um, because I've worked with your committee on the Utah Lake project, and I was getting a lot of feedback, and we were very actively involved in that. But I just think your committee is a great example of how these committees are supposed to work in the community and actually, you know, really working to make a difference. So I appreciate all your efforts. Did you want to say something, Debbie?
Yes, I also want to echo the mayor's sentiment. Um, you guys have great minds, each of you have expertise that I learned a lot of. Um, and Sarah, honestly, you started this committee six years ago, is that what you said? And, um, I still was impressed with her, how little bit of recycling she did with her family for, it was amazing. So, you have been a pioneer, and I'm told that you're going to be leaving the committee at the end of the year. And honestly, you are one of the great, it makes me emotional, you are one of the great Orem citizens, and we thank you for your service. Let's give her a... And I also want to thank the, to the individual Tara and the business, because you're exactly what we want to see, great ideas, um, being wise stewards, and teaching the future. I think, um, Tara was a teacher, and to teach others about how to wisely use our resources. And please nominate businesses or individuals to the community as you see. We'd be happy to consider people for next year. So thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, we've got personal appearances. I'll just read this. It says, "Time has been set aside for the public to express their ideas, concerns, and comments on items not scheduled as public hearings on the agenda. Those wishing to speak are encouraged to show respect for those who serve the city. Comments should focus on issues concerning the city. Those wishing to speak should have signed in before the beginning of the meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less." And tonight, we've got a smaller list, so we'll be able to have everyone come up. And I'll just call your name, and if you just, uh, state, just state your name, and then also where you're from. Uh, first on the agenda, I've got Carrie Sigwa.
So, my name is Carrie Sigwa, and I am in Orem. And it appears that our feasibility study has created quite a stir. It actually is providing many of the residents here a voice that has been neglected within the Alpine School District. So I thank you for the opportunity to be able to let us residents share our concerns and voice them. In a recent school board candidate debate, candidates were asked about the Mountain View investigation. Board member Wilson stated something to the fact that the moment she received a concerned... Board member Wilson stated something to the fact that the moment she received a concerned email from the parents in July of 2020, she immediately removed herself from representing the parents from the situation that in case the board needed to review the investigation. That way, she admitted right then and there that she was not an advocate for students or parents, and therefore left students and parents unrepresented. To help refresh board member Wilson's memory, she did actually listen to us the first couple of months until the investigation concluded in September of 2020. She then removed herself after we requested her help for the retaliation we received from the Mountain View administration, as well as appealed the district's investigation decision. Instead of putting us on the board agenda to listen to parents with what she claimed fresh eyes, the board had their lawyer send us a letter to no longer speak to board members, which a copy has been sent to you in your email. From there, we reached out to state school board officials for help, where the state superintendent Dixon advised us that she would do nothing until an OCR report was on her desk. So we did as we were told. We filed with the Federal Board of Education Office of Civil Rights, where we discovered the Alpine School District actually has the highest number of federal investigations going on in the state of Utah, which has also been emailed to you. Unfortunately, school district students, parents, teachers, and staff have been blacklisted and retaliated against by Alpine School District employees and administration, as well as board members, for doing exactly what we're asked to do, which is to see something, say something. We have no representation at the school level from our districts. For many parents, it is easy and better for them to transfer, move, for employees to change jobs, and to even suffer through incidents to avoid what they've experienced. A good example of that is the representation that Ada presented last month. So, really fast, sorry, I'll finish. My conclusion is, please give us residents a continued voice, and I would like to ask for a proposal that is council members would let Orem residents speak without fear of retaliation by letting residents vote on the district split regardless of what the, the study reveals. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Mike Jones. Okay. Oh, I see. Okay, and I, and I see there's, yeah, I'll be curious to see what this is. This is swimming, so anyway, go ahead.
Yes, so my name is Jen Gale. I live in Orem. Um, I've been a resident for the last 15 years. And then before I start, I just want to thank all of you for serving. I know you spent countless hours, and it is a thankless job, uh, but our family appreciates it, so thank you. I'd like to tell you why I feel qualified to speak about swimming in Orem. I have six children, and they have all swam in varying degrees of enthusiasm and ability and even desire. They've done virtually every program that Orem City has to offer, starting with Mom and Me lessons, to swim lessons, to the summer recreation program, to OTAC, to high school swim, to UV Rays, to BYU Swim. We have all across the spectrum. I currently have four swimmers with UV Rays, and three of those will be doing summer rec as well. I was the president of OTAC for four years, and I was the high school coach at Orem High for two years as well. So I kind of travel in the swim world, and I feel like I'm pretty invested and know what's happening there. I'd also like to share just a brief bit of history, because most of you probably don't spend a lot of time thinking about swim and what happens in Orem. OTAC, as you may or may not know, was the club team here in Orem and has been for like the past 40 years. They have, they serve developmental through competitive, and they kind of had a little bit of a difficult history with Orem City, and that came to a head last fall when, uh, they were, felt like they were forced to dissolve. And there's a lot of debate about who's to blame there, and I don't really want to go there right now. But what I do want to talk about is those swimmers that were left behind. There were 60 families representing, 66 families actually at the time, representing maybe 150-ish swimmers. And when the club dissolved, they were left without a home. So Orem OTAC leadership went to UV Rays and said, hey, can you take all these swimmers and help us out? And UV Ray leadership rose to the occasion. They spent 14-hour days trying to accommodate all of our swimmers, and the end result was, when swim season opened, all of our Orem swimmers had a place to go. So UV Rays has been managing the Orem water and taking care of all of the Orem swimmers. They have a pool at BYU, a pool at Provo, and a pool at Orem. In March, so last month, the Recreation Department approached the city with a potential budget and asked for money to start their own club swim team, and that budget was approved. But I'm here today to ask you to reconsider that decision. I don't think it's in the best interest of Orem swimmers or Orem City. And the reason for that is twofold. First of all, Orem families are happy. They're having a great experience with UV Rays. They didn't want the switch. They were jostled about. They were unhappy. But they've gone and had a fabulous experience, and I have not spoken to one Orem family that wants to go to a new Orem City-sponsored club. Two, it takes a lot more time and energy to start a club than most people are aware of, including Orem City. And I think it's going to cost the city more, and it's going to take them longer to get critical mass for it to be successful. Either case, though, if Orem City starts their own club, Orem families lose. They will either have to choose to go to Orem City's new offering, which is inferior but costs the same amount of money, or they will choose to stay with UV Rays, in which case they will be forced from three pools down to two and lose access to their 50-meter lanes. So, in sum, I would just like you to reconsider that decision. Orem families want to stay with UV Rays. We want that to be our home swim club. We want to embrace them and have them as part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mike. Mike Jones.
Thank you. My name's Mike Jones. I'm a Orem City resident. We've lived here for about 20 years. Um, I have a swimmer who's 11 years old and competes in the developmental level. I also have two swimmers who swam with OTAC and Tepenovas High School, who also swam at the developmental level. So on March 22nd, the city council approved a budget request that allows Orem to form a new swimming club affiliated with USA Swimming, and I'm here to invite the city to reconsider the approval of that request and instead build a partnership with UV Rays, which is an established swimming club to provide competitive swimming in Orem. I believe this will be better for, uh, Orem families and Orem swimmers who want to be involved in competitive swimming and a better use of city, of public resources than forming a city-run club. We were members of OTAC when the membership voted to dissolve the club in late August. We were reluctant to join UV Rays because our swimmer's not an elite swimmer, and our family goals for swimming don't include Olympic glory or even college scholarships. However, looking back, our swimmer's had a great experience on her team, and we're very happy with UV Rays as a, as our new swim team. As an elected and unpaid UV Rays board members, member, I worked with others to develop a proposal for a partnership between UV Rays and Orem, which was submitted to Orem Recreation earlier this spring. It contains a six-point plan that addresses some concerns raised by Orem community leaders and Orem families. So I'll just mention two key points in that proposal here. First is that UV Rays will provide priority access to the Orem Fitness Center for Orem families who want to train at the Orem Fitness Center up to the capacity limit of the pool. Second, UV Rays will become Orem's swim team by being an active, visible part of the Orem community. This will involve inviting public officials to swim meets, press releases, service projects, that sort of thing. So in closing, I'd just like to add that, uh, in all my discussions with Orem Recreation staff, city council, people, especially Bryce Merrill and Dave Spencer, as well as others, UV Rays leaders, the focus has always been on what is best for the swimmers. We might not agree on how to make that happen, but we all agree on the end goal. And I'm glad to be part of a community that's focused on what's best for the youth and children. So in conclusion, I'd like to, uh, invite the city to reconsider forming its own swim club. I think Orem families, including my own, are happy where we are, particularly developmental swimmers, because at UV Rays, there's a, uh, there's a training process for new coaches. So my daughter will always be coached by the newer swimmers of, the newer coaches of a club. She'll not be coached by the elite coaches. At UV Rays, we were surprised to find that there's a process and a structure in place for developing the newer coaches who will coach swimmers like my daughter. That'll be very difficult to recreate in a smaller club. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for serving on city council.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we've got Ashley Shumway.
Hi, I'm Ashley Shumway. I have been an Orem resident since 1987, so I've spent most of my life here. Um, I'm asking you the same thing, to reconsider, um, forming an Orem swim club. I have had three swimmers. I have two swimmers currently, um, swimming with UV Rays. Both of them are swimming with OTAC. Um, and we are really enjoying UV Rays. We're really, really impressed with the, um, the coaches. The organization has been exceptional. The only real argument I've heard for forming an Orem, and for Orem forming its own club, is that UV Rays can't provide something for these recreational swimmers or these swimmers that are brand-new starting out. I think it's a misconception that they are, they have this super competitive program that's only really good for, you know, kids who really want to swim in college and things like that. And I just wanted you to know, we've had the opposite, opposite experience. My middle son was never interested in swimming. My other two always did, and, um, a year and a half ago, he decided he wanted to start swimming and had barely started when we had kind of the shift and ended up swimming with UV Rays. And, um, they have an amazing program for high schoolers. My son has had fantastic coaching. He had great kids. He has been able to swim at all three pools based on availability. You know, when Orem is closed, he'll be at BYU, um, or he'll be at the Provo Rec Center, and, and there have been plenty of times where the, the pool has had to be closed, and we've had to be at different locations. I think having the access to different pools has made a world of difference for him, and the ability to provide coaches who have the amount of training has been huge as well. So, um, he, you know, he was a beginning swimmer. I wouldn't call him a beginning swimmer anymore because of the amazing coaches and the amazing team that he has had. But I just wanted you to know that I see room for everyone in this club, and I think that they do a fantastic job and will continue to do a fantastic job if you let them. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we've got, I'm not sure I've got your name right, but Hiro Habino.
Thank you. Um, my name is Hiro Habino. Uh, I've been a resident of Orem for 25 years. My son, 15 years old, swam with OTAC for five and a half years, and is currently in the elite national group in UV Rays. When OTAC dissolved, it was the end of the world for him. He loved OTAC that much. But as soon as he joined the UV Ray, he got to know the club provides an excellent competitive swimming program with experiences, coaches, a well-organized administration, and great people. Actually, it was much better off. No wonder UV Ray had been the number one senior team in Utah State. We are pleased to be a part of UV Ray now. Forming such an excellent team will take years of effort. As a resident of Orem, I will be so proud to have UV Rays represent our city. I'm here tonight because I was hoping you could help prevent taking the pool away from our Orem seamers again. Some previous OTAC seamers had to quit swimming because of the difficulty of traveling, traveling to Provo or BYU pools of UV Rays. If Orem City forms a new club, those who, including my son, practice in Orem Pool, will lose water access one more time. I don't want seamers ever to have to go through this painful experience again. Please choose the best way for current Orem seamers who have been swimming for years, and I'm sure UV Ray will be the best choice for prospective Orem seamers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we've got Sissy Rasmussen.
My name is Sissy Rasmussen. I'm an Orem resident and have children at Orem High, Lakridge Junior High, and Centennial Elementary. I continue to be concerned about the study to consider creating an Orem School District. And I want to be very clear, I'm not against anyone personally on the city council. I'm only in favor of doing what's best for our schools. Leaving Alpine School District is not in the best interest of Orem schools and Orem students. We already know from public data and recent studies that a split like that will require increased property taxes and decreased services. What the feasibility study will show is just how much the tax increase would be and what services would need to be cut. Unfortunately, the city's choice of discovery education consultants raises some red flags. I'm not sure we'll get the most accurate pertinent information from their study, but I hope we do. Two weeks ago, I shared a petition here. It's not a petition to stop the idea of creating an Orem School District. The petition specifically addresses the company chosen by Orem City. There is no misinformation in the petition. While you may disagree with the conclusions or opinions, the facts are accurate. Discovery Education is newly formed, has no experience specifically doing feasibility studies, and does have a founder who is working on creating a Draper School District. Almost 2,000 people, Orem residents and Orem teachers, have signed that petition. Comments made by the mayor in the last meeting tell me that the petition is not taken seriously, and that in fact, my views or views of anyone opposing the district split idea are not taken seriously. I don't know if you intended to send that message to dismiss our views, but that's the vibe a lot of us are getting. I asked the mayor and city council to welcome differing views. This is an incredibly serious issue with long-term consequences. It would affect my children and their education. My views matter, and the views of any Orem parent with kids in school right now matter. The views of teachers matter. Just a quick story, uh, council member Lanay Millet has been visiting PTAs and SCCs lately, and I appreciate her willingness to have those open discussions. But I'm not sure that a message from many parents and teachers is coming across. A couple weeks ago, she visited Centennial Elementary School Community Council, and she asked two questions. First, when we first heard about the study before a company was even chosen, who supported the idea? No one raised their hand. Then she asked who opposed the idea of studying an Orem School District. Everyone opposed it, all 17 in attendance, including parents, teachers, and administrators. Then our PTA president asked this question in return. She said, "One reason that's been given for doing this study was that Orem schools were being closed and consolidated." Then she waved her hand to the room and said, "We, we were the ones who were consolidated." What message does that send to you that we oppose splitting from the district? That's a viewpoint that matters. It's based on experience and knowledge and a belief that any problems we have with the district won't get better by creating our own district, but by working within our district. So please invite those views to the table as well. Thank you.
Next, we've got Connie Christensen.
My name is Connie Christensen. I'm a 25-year resident of the city of Orem, and I'm speaking about the proposed city-sponsored swim team. I'm in agreement with all those who have previously spoken. I served on the former OTAC Parent Governing Board for almost eight years in a variety of roles, and I am now currently the meet director of the BYU Swim and Dive Team. Um, two of my children swam on the OTAC Club Team, and two of them now swim on the UV Rays Club Team. As has been said, UV Rays is known as an elite club with numerous championship achievements, but there, what is not commonly known is that there is a healthy developmental base that far exceeds the number of high performers on the team. The kids are encouraged to swim and compete at whatever level they can, wherever that is. I have a 15-year-old son who swims on the Nationals Team, what would be considered to be the top team. However, he is encouraged to swim where he can and how he can. And similarly, the quality of coaching that he experienced between his OTAC coaching and his UV Rays coaching, the incremental jumps that he has made have been phenomenal. They have created him into an elite swimmer. I also have a nine-year-old daughter. She began swimming with UV Rays last August when she was eight years old. She began on their UV Rays Swim School, swimming at the Orem Fitness Center in the water that they allowed us to have. The swim school team is designed to let potential swimmers just kind of dip their toes into the water of competitive swimming without fully committing. Swimmers on the team are not required to volunteer or fundraise, nor are they held to attendance requirements. They are permitted to compete in two swim meets per year, and they are taught by quality coaches. My daughter attended practice regularly, and she made enough progress to move up to their entry-level team. My daughter attended practice regularly and she made enough progress to move up to their entry level team. She is not particularly competitive, but she enjoys going to practice and getting a little bit better every single day. And she's in a team of kids exactly like her that come from different areas, whether it's from Orem, Provo, parts of Utah County. She didn't qualify to swim at the state meet. She didn't even qualify for the second tier championship meet and her coach was overjoyed with the progress that she has been making. It's not all about winning on UV rays. I would also like to speak to the formation of an Orem sponsored club team as a citizen and the taxpayer of the city. My kids have tried out lots of different sports through Orem recs program. We have tried swimming tracks, soccer ballet, gymnastics, to name a few. Sports through the rec department were always considered an introduction, not an elite academy. And if my kid had wanted to progress in those sports, I would have signed them up for private lessons or for school teams. I just don't feel that it's a responsibility of the government to provide elite competition opportunities for its citizens. I feel like if citizens want those opportunities, they can find them and pay for them privately. A club team is hugely expensive to launch. UV rays, it also requires a dedicated parent volunteer base and UV rays has that. It will take a long time to replicate that. To sum up, I, I'm asking why we would use Orem tax dollars to recreate something that already exists and already exists in, in a great, in a great manner. So Orem families are happy with their status quo and want to continue. I encourage you to create a partnership with UV rays and allow them access to Orem water. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we've got Jessie Evans.
Hi, I am Jessie Evans and I have lived in Orem since the day I was born. In November, my seven-year-old son Ian was run over by a truck walking home from school. He was lifeblooded to Primary Children's Medical Center where, by the grace of God, and because of Orem's quick and capable first responders, shout out to the fire guys Cameron, Casey, Camden, Braden, and Officers Tracy, Andreessen and Hancock, he made a miraculous recovery. Over the course of his rehabilitation at home, his incredible principal, John LaBere of Northridge, worked with our Alpine School District to secure funds to pay his teacher to come to our home and make sure Ian didn't fall too far behind the rest of his class. Ian suffered many injuries during his accident, including bilateral skull fractures that separated his hearing bones, resulting in moderate hearing loss on both sides. As he prepared to go back to school in person, audiologists from Alpine School District reached out to us to make sure that they were providing the resources that he needed to be successful in the classroom. When he returned, he returned to a crowd of cheering teachers and administrators who had been following his journey and were there to assist him every step of the way. Thankfully, Ian is now thriving. In fact, he recently tested into the Alpine School District Advanced Learning Lab Program. We are very sad to be leaving the incredible students and staff at Northridge, but he is super excited to join his older brother who's currently in the AL program at Foot Hill Elementary. We are hopeful his younger brother and sister will follow suit in a couple of years. My oldest child also just tested into the Gifted Services Program at Oak Canyon Junior High, where she will be starting this fall. We are incredibly grateful for the programs we have access to through the district. And I know that as a family, we have barely scratched the surface when it comes to resources we have access to. In the mayor's April message, he said, when I ran, I promised to help keep Orem a great place to live, work and raise a family. There are many parts that promise, but let me mention two. First, to keep your taxes low. I believe that you can make better decisions with your money than any government organization can. Second, provide the best education possible to our children and young people. As a parent of five young children here in Orem, I have been following the city council's move to explore the option of splitting away from the Alpine School District since those words mentioned. The economies of scale suggest that keeping taxes low would either take away from the resources we currently have access to, or it would raise the financial burden on our community. I don't want my children to lose access to what currently makes their education great on a day-to-day basis and an emergency basis. I don't want students with special needs to lose access to necessary services. I am concerned that the breadth and depth of services Orem students currently have access to through the Alpine School District would be very hard to replace, especially without having to raise taxes significantly. And these are things that I hope to see addressed in the feasibility study.
Thank you. Next, we've got John Wolf.
Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me an opportunity to be able to speak. I am very grateful. I want to start out by saying thank you very much for all your hard work and all your hard labor. I've, I've come to know some of you through, through my wife, Liz, who has been so graciously serving on the Summer Fest Committee. She, she does a wonderful job and she, she keeps me in line and personally to Lanay, I owe an apology to her, to her team for last year's Summer Fest when I got a little voicey when, when trying to follow the, the recommendations of my wife on how to run the, the parade. At, at this time, I, I'm very grateful that I live in this city. I am a lifelong member of this city. I've been very appreciative of, of being able to not only be raised here, but to raise my children here. It, it does sadden me that in, in trying to work very hard in raising my family and to protect my family against the hard times that I've recently received a letter from the city of Orem, a warning notice from the, the NIT, the Neighborhood Improvement Team. In, in no fault of my own unawares that of where I can park my vehicle on my personal property, of things as to how to collect the resources that are no longer needed on my property and how to distribute those, those resources to the proper locations, where I can store them on my personal property as I prepare to, for the, the cleanup that the city holds once a year. There, the, the Neighborhood Improvement Committee or team has, is, is doing a wonderful job. They have a valiant effort. I saw the presentation that they gave you two weeks ago when, when they voiced how, how there's many wonderful homes that are being brought back to beautification. Unfortunately, in an effort to beautify those homes, that I feel has overreached and stepped into people who are working as myself to, to be a good, strong neighbor, to be a good, strong homeowner, to try and improve his personal home. I, I've, I found it very emotional and I got very emotional when I, when I found out that I was being charged potential fines if I don't improve this. So in, in conclusion, I want to let you know that I've, I've, I've taken the necessary steps to try and come into compliance with the current codes of the city. But the, the city codes need to be looked at and that they need to be reviewed. The mayor's told the city last, two weeks ago that he, he had the ear to listen to the, to the team members. Let's, let's strive really hard to improve that, to look at the codes from the Constitution of the United States and, and, and how to keep that in alignment with the Constitution. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we've got, and, and just one, one thing to say about that. I mean, we're supposed to just let you talk, but you can reach out to that NIT group directly. Okay.
I, I have, I've had them over to my home. I've had wonderful conversations with them. But again, I think it's the code that needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Different, different parts of the code. And, and we can go into that later.
Yeah.
We will.
No, if you, if you want to shoot it. Like I said, I'm not supposed to do this, but if you, if you'd like to shoot us an email about your specific concerns, then we can try and get that to NIT. Thank you. Next, we've got Kelsey Young.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Young. I am an Orem citizen. My daughter Sadie, she's nine, almost 10, swims with UV rays and we've loved our experience there. About three years ago, she swam with OTAC when she was in first grade and it was great, but it wasn't a good fit for our family. At that point in time, we decided to just focus on summer swim team and kind of see where she went from there. And then last summer, we realized it was time for her to, you know, really develop her skills and, and kind of dig in a little bit more. And so we joined the UV Rays team just a little less than a year ago. At that same time was the time when the OTAC was like going away. I don't know the word for it, but they were closing and they were going to be joining with UV Rays or some of those swimmers would be moving over. And I was really nervous for that because I didn't love the OTAC program from my experience. And so I was nervous that that was actually going to make UV Rays a less, better team or a lot, like just not a great program. But I've actually experienced the opposite by the OTAC team and UV Rays coming together. We've seen an amazing just community come together with these children. And our team is better for it. I've loved getting to know the families from all different places in Orem that were part of OTAC. The biggest concern is that we only have three pools available to us and that might not seem like a big deal, but that's 33% of our resources. And if we don't have access to the Orem waters, then we really do have to change how our team runs as it stands. And it could potentially mean that we have to not welcome as many swimmers to our team, which will push for a more elite club, which is not what we want. We want a place where our kids can develop and grow and have fun as well as if they want to compete at a higher level, be able to have a place for that as well. So we've had a great experience with UV rays. I'd like to echo what other parents have said that to just reconsider and to collaborate with UV rays to finding the best solution for Orem residents. We, the, the coaches are incredible. They, they are absolutely incredible. We love every single one of them. So thank you.
Thank you. We've got Ross Potts.
Hi, my name is Rob Potts. I'm sorry, my spelling is, my writing is bad. I thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. David and I have known each other for 40 years. We served together in California Anaheim Mission, so it's good to see him again. And, and I think he looks better than I do. So I, I think the years have been good to him. Let me just describe my, you know, interest in swimming. I'm here to talk about the swim team that we're talking about here. I echo everybody, what everybody else has said. I've been a competitive swimmer since I was nine years old. I swam all the way through high school. I was on Brighton High School Swim Team. We took state when I was a sophomore in high school of 14 people. I swam in college for a year. And my, all my children, I have five children. I've lived in Orem now for 14 years. My youngest daughter is now 15. My oldest son is 35 and my youngest son is 28. So I have a big gap between my youngest son and my daughter. She's blessed, same wife. Big blessing, this, this daughter showed up. And we love her to death, but it's been very interesting. My experience in swimming back east, I worked, I lived in the New York metro metropolitan area. My, my son swam in New Jersey. Jersey swimming is very competitive. It gets to the point where you, you have to either make your times and you stay on the team or you get kicked off the team and there's really no thing. I was really, I, if, for those in the swimming community know that when, when OTAC was being dissolved, I was probably the most vocal person about the dissolution of that. We had a meeting with all of the members of the team at the very end. I was very skeptical of going to UV rays. I was very skeptical at the time because I was just concerned that UV rays would not allow swimmers who are not marginal. My daughter at the time, I didn't really view her as being really competitive swimmer. She loved to swim because her brothers did. Her brothers were very competitive. And so when UV rays took her in, I too can, what, what Connie Christiansen said, my daughter now swims in, on the national team and, or national swim group in UV rays. Her times have been great. She swam at Orem High School. She's the only girl, ninth grade girl who actually lettered at Orem. She went to districts this year. She actually finished ninth in 500 yard freestyle swim. And so it's been a big change for her and, and my skepticism has changed. The one thing I wanted to point out, and, and just because I, I'm just a dumb engineer by trade, is the, the money, the cost of this. So to put in perspective, for Orem to be able to put together a swim team, let's just go through some cost numbers. The, the equipment that's going to be required, if you just look at the short course and we have, we have a 50-meter pool, and I've talked to David about this. There are only two 50-meter pools in the state of Utah. We have one and the other one's in Kearns. We don't use that pool the way it really should be utilized. In order to have the equipment, it's going to cost at least $32,000 for the short course, long course, add another lanes to that. It'll be somewhere between $48,000 to $52,000. Coaching staff is going to run you anywhere between $80,000 to $100,000 a year. And then all the ancillary volunteers that you would need. This is a big expense item that would be a reoccurring expense. I deal in public partnerships all the time and I think this is the public partnership that works. I think that UV rays can provide that. The budgets that they run, just to give you an idea, are probably in excess of $400,000 to $500,000 a year. We don't have that in Orem to do that, but we do have a group that already has been there. UV rays is the oldest US Swimming Association here in Utah. It actually was around, believe it or not, when I was swimming, when I was nine. So I just would like you to reconsider that and let's use the resources we have and not add any more cost of what our good city has to bear. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we've got Haley Hamblin.
Hello, my name is Haley. I'm a teacher in Alpine School District in an Orem school. And I just have a few things to think about. You, the city council, need to make sure that your feasibility study looks at the impact that a split district would have on teachers, salary, benefits, lane changes, step changes, retention. Every teacher I've talked to, and trust me, I've talked to a lot of teachers, have said that they are 100% against an Orem School District. And many of those that I've talked to have said that they would leave Orem, the Orem School District. And mostly because they, it's hard to leave a school district that you've worked out for so many years. And it would be difficult to match those benefits, salaries, lane changes, et cetera, in a smaller district. And I don't think that that's an idle threat either. Before making any decisions at a school-wide level, at a classroom level, we always ask this question, what is best for students? And one of the number one answers to that question always is retain and support quality teachers. And I can guarantee you that you guys are going to lose good, high-quality, effective teachers if this split goes through. So as you consider your feasibility study, make sure that it's looking at teacher impact as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we've got one more and I just want to say to all of you that are talking about swimming, Dave Spencer has agreed to be the point person to work with you to try and bring your ideas together and, and just sift through all that. So feel free to reach out to him. And you can reach out the rest of us too, but he's going to be in charge. Our last person here is John Barak.
Mayor and city, I'm John Barak, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate your time and grateful for your service. I'm here to talk about the Alpine School District, often known as the ASD. We can also refer to it as the apathetic school district. Two days after I last spoke to you, I met with Kimberly Byrd, Barry Beckstrand, David Stevenson, Mike Browning, and Rob Smith, who decided not to show up for our meeting that had been scheduled several weeks in advance, to talk about Northridge Elementary and the problems there. While Northridge has great teachers and we love our teachers, I think teachers love schools. They don't love school districts. I'm going to say that. If you pay teachers well, they'll stay. So why are they apathetic? Well, they didn't know they lost 83 students at Northridge Elementary School last year. A quick calculation by David Stevenson while we were there is over 55 of them are still in the district. They're at private schools, charter schools, Provo School District or somewhere else, but they're not at Northridge. They didn't know they left. They didn't care and they don't know why and they didn't care much either. Debbie LaRay followed up and I thanked her last time and I'm going to thank her again about the naked incident at Northridge Elementary. When we asked this group of executives that are part of the $5.2 million of 28 executives, that's $187,6,000 per executive, they started telling us about a little girl that was naked in front of school, of children at Northridge, not the boy, which was the problem. So now there's two naked incidents at Northridge that parents weren't notified of. They are apathetic. They wanted to talk about, they wanted to talk about They are apathetic. They wanted to talk about, they wanted to talk about FTEs, full-time equivalence. That's all they wanted to talk about. Well, guess what? The overhead for busing, and there's no students that get bussed at Northridge that live in the Northridge area, is $246 per student per year and multiplied by the number of school, students at Northridge. That's two teachers. When we have classroom sizes of 33 through 37 for third through sixth grade, that is too large, and Alpine admits it, but there's nothing they can do financially. Alpine has $31 million depreciation of new schools that get allocated. That is $386 per student. Guess what? Not a single student at Northridge gets any of that. That costs Northridge three teachers a year for overhead costs. North, when the city council hosted the Alpine School District in 2017, the overhead was $1,257 per student per year. In 2020, the numbers they used, Rob Smith presented at the split proposals, Alpine talked about splitting in last year. It was $1,907 or $1,903. That is an increase of 11.5% per year or 51% over a three-year period. Who has overhead that grows like that? Apathetic. They don't care. They have wrought iron fences around brand-new schools at Eagle Mountain, and they can't afford specialty teachers or class sizes under 33 at Northridge Elementary in Orem. Everyone else took a little longer. I'm going to take about 10 or 20 more seconds. Northridge was ranked 46th in 2011. In 2017, it ranked 335th in elementary schools on standard basic tests. Six years later, that's 50 points, 50 schools per year. Why? Apathy. Now, Oak Canyon Junior High, standard exam proficiency pass rate, 49% in the most recent standardized testing. 49% are proficient. That means 51% are failing. Alpine School District is apathetic. I encourage you to look hard and long. We have withdrawn, we have notified Alpine School District that we have removed our children from Alpine School District. We are going to Provo School District next year. People malign Provo. My third grader will be in a class of 22. My sixth grader will be in a class of 25. They have art, music, STEM, coding classes after school. What's wrong with Provo School District? The answer is nothing. I'd like to be like them, and we're going to be with them. And if things don't change, we might move to Provo. Thank you very, very much, and we appreciate all your service and the study. Please look long and hard. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to the consent items on number eight. We just need to approve the meeting minutes from April 12.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from April 12.
Hey, sorry. And, and we've got a resolution adopting the 2022 MAG pre-disaster mitigation plan. So there's two items there.
Okay, then my motion will include approving the minutes and approving the resolution for the MAG 2022 MAG pre-disaster mitigation plan.
I second the approval of the consent items.
Just start down there.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. The consent items pass. We've got a couple more things. We've got a public hearing. And we'd like to invite Ken Ransum and Ken Joe Matthews to come up. Terry.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Good to see you again. It's been two whole weeks. Thank you for having me back. Yeah, thank you. So this time we have a, two recommendations for CDBG COVID funding. And here's a summary of the initial COVID allocation that the city received from CDBG funds. And then there's a summary of the second allocation. And at the bottom there, you can see the amount that's remaining, $70,928. And this, this is the limitation for use of these funds listed for you. And so our first recommendation for you is the Orem Library would like to purchase an additional 25 wireless hotspots for LMI households in Orem. And that cost is $10,000, and we recommend that this request be approved. Then Sharon Elementary is requesting $500 for the purchase of five picnic tables so that students can eat outside and spread out and not be so close together. And so we've, we recommend this, this proposal as well. So there's our summary for it. It'll be nice and quick today for you. So there's our summary, and this, we recommend that these funding recommendations be approved. And so that leaves, this is the balance that's remaining, and there are two possible uses of this remainder that we'll come to in the future with, in the near future, hopefully, for city parks, water fountains at city parks, and then also to, for the senior center, yeah, for the senior center, the four meals at the senior center to finish out that funding. Any questions?
Yeah, I do. Debbie, oh, go ahead, Debbie.
Yes, I was at the senior center today with my father, and they had made us aware that MAG is not going to be delivering on Monday. So the senior center, is that to help them provide these extra meals? Or tell me what that?
Yeah, so it will be helping them provide extra bills at the senior center.
Okay.
But we'll be, we have to have a 30-day public comment, so we have to wait another 30 days before we can bring that to you.
Okay. I think that, I mean, that happened really quickly, and it sounds like there's a lot of changes on the MAG side. I don't know if we can get more information to see if there's a way we can help on that side as well as our center.
Yes, and we'll, we'll have the other, the other entitlements have more money than we do, so I will let them know. I have a meeting with them next week, and I'll let them know that MAG needs more money for.
Okay, thank you so much.
Terry, so the, on the first page, what was, what did we do at Geneva Elementary?
Geneva, when we were at Geneva, they actually put Plexiglas dividers in, on their lunchroom tables. And they were actually took those with them when they went to Suncrest or Parkside.
So we put them in before they closed the school, then they closed the school.
And then they took them over to Parkside.
And then Sharon's another one that we're hearing rumors that they're going to close. So apparently they're not spending money in Orem. They're just taking from Orem, but, so we're going to put picnic ba, picnic tables in Sharon, and then they're going to close Sharon.
I don't, I don't, I'm not aware of the Sharon closure. We, we just had the request for the picnic tables from the principal.
So I just saw that Geneva. I mean, I hope they don't, you know, who knows what they're going to close.
Hopefully, they will, they'll move them to, if they do that, they'll move them to another low-income.
If there's another elementary school left in Orem, then they'll move to that one. Okay. Also, can you, can you just explain those hotspots? I'm not clear if they're just in the library, if you check them out and take them home.
My understanding is you can check them out for six weeks, and then you can renew them. We did a series in the beginning of COVID of them. It was a very popular program. They were actually able to get money from another source for people with higher incomes. It's been a very popular program, so they want to continue that program for low-income families.
So, and, my question is just kind of how that, how they work as far as?
Yeah, we, I was really just coming up to express our appreciation for having that option because in the depth of the COVID closed down, we had a lot of low-income residents who would access wifi at places like McDonald's and other places like that. So we worked with Ken and the CDBG program to provide hotspots from T-Mobile. T-Mobile does not charge for the actual physical hotspot, but they charge for the service. And so two fiscal years ago, we were able to circulate those to low and moderate income residents, and they just filled out a short application. I'm, I'm familiar with the CDBG program, and I was just really grateful for the resource. When the applications came across my desk, I could see the, the depth and the breadth of the community that was using them. There were a lot of older people who were using them, and there were a lot of different parts of our community represented in those applications. So then we were able to get a grant from the state to continue the program. And then this year, we would love to continue to offer them primarily to low and moderate income individuals. We just do not feel like it's feasible for us to take on the whole bill. So we will work with T-Mobile to reduce the load that we've had in the mobile hotspots. And then we will still be able to continue to check them out through primarily the CDBG program and maybe just a very smaller amount that we use another grant for to have them for those who have over income.
So, so just to clarify, so these are hotspots that you can check out the library, you take home. They just work over cellular, but they provide wifi at your house?
Yes.
Is that right? And so, so that, that cost is fixed, and just you're saying the ongoing cost that's dealt with as far as if we add, how many did you say, 25?
For this round, it's 25.
And so that ongoing cellular cost, you said you had a way to deal with that?
Yes, we will reduce from 45, which was the total that we had at the kind of height that the funding we had available. We will reduce that probably to 30. So we'll just keep a smaller amount for households that do not qualify as low and moderate income households. We had some, some interesting situations. You know, people may not have the low, moderate income housing, but they were short just a couple of weeks while they were waiting for their wifi to be installed, or they'd moved houses and they just hadn't had the chance to find wifi. So we used, we had a few really great stories where people used them to bridge those gaps, but primarily we wanted to make sure that those who, you know, had been using hotspots or mobile resources in other locations that were closed during the pandemic, we wanted to make sure that they had availability. And they can check them out for six weeks. They can renew it if there is not someone waiting for them. But we felt like six weeks was a good period of time to let them conduct household business, whether it was for school or personal or work business. And then if they needed another one, they would get in the hold queue and take another one after the fact. But it's been, it's been a great program. It's been highly utilized, and we really appreciate the CDBG program for supporting that need in Orem.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Does someone want to introduce a?
We're allowed to approve it this week, right?
So, no, yeah, we need to open the public hearing, take public comment, and then close the public hearing.
Okay, so we'll open a public hearing. Somebody's got to have something they want to say.
Yeah. Normally they don't.
Okay, well, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll have a, someone like to make a resolution?
I move, I make a resolution the city receipt, nope, sorry. Move that we, what am I doing?
By resolution.
By resolution. The city, where are we at though? The city, you accept the projected use of funds for CARES Act, CBDD, CB funding, and approve the substantial amendment to the 2019, 2020 annual action plan.
Second.
Do you want to start down there?
I'm not sure what that was that you just said.
It was all good.
I understand what it is, and I'm going to second it.
No, it's already been seconded.
I.
I.
I. I. I.
I.
I understand until, until Jeff tried to second something that had already been seconded, but I'll approve.
The resolution's passed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, we've got, Jamie, do you have anything?
Yeah, Mayor, just a couple of items of information. The first one being the Mountainland Association of Governments annually accepts applications for transportation projects prospectively to add to the trans, the MAG's transportation improvement plan. This year, we are, they are accepting applications for funding for the 25, 26 construction year. And this year, we submitted the Lakeview Parkway project, which is the roadway that extends from essentially the Provo Airport, Center Street in Provo, and connects up with the Geneva Road Corridor in Orem. It's an $18 million project. That application goes before what they call the Technical Advisory Committee at MAG. And these are engineering professionals who score the projects based on merit. And I just wanted to let you know that our project scored number two on the list. So it scored very high on the list, and, and we were encouraged by that. The only project that scored higher was a new UVX light rail, Bus Rapid Transit Station at 900 East across from the BYU Law School and New Music School. So you recall when they built the UVX project, the neighbors in that area were adamant that they did not want UVX in proximity to their neighborhood. And so UVX bypassed that specific station. Well, now they've come back and they've requested that we have the UVX station at that particular location. And so that was a project scored better than our project in terms of meeting the merits of all of the technical transportation criteria that is part of that MAG process. But we're encouraged, and we believe that the, the scoring puts us in a very good position in the future to receive funding to help in the construction of that road. Like I said, ideally in the 25, 26 fiscal year. The other, a couple of other things I want to just say, one wish Councilmember Lamson a happy birthday. And we do have some treats in the council conference room after this meeting, and we would invite you to enjoy them. If Councilmember Lamson chooses to share. And then finally, as many of you know, we this week are going to say goodbye to Heather as our full-time city attorney. And I just wanted to publicly express my appreciation to Heather and my thanks for her contributions. She has been an outstanding employee, and she has done so many remarkable things here in the city. She has always been so responsive to my needs as a city manager, but I think I can speak for the collective city as a whole and recognizing the caliber of work that you have done and the way you have carried yourself and the character and integrity that you hold. And I just want you to know that we will miss you. And we hope that you will continue to maintain association with us, and we wish you well as, as you move forward and you work with your husband and you grow your family business. And everything else that's wonderful in your life, we hope that it continues. So I just wanted, I just wanted you to know how much we appreciate you.
Thank you, Jamie. It's been an honor and an absolute privilege to serve the people of Orem, serve the city council and staff. When you leave a place, you realize how much you enjoy the people that you've been with, and I appreciate all of you, and I appreciate the kind words. And I wish Orem all the good things that it deserves in the future.
We just want you to know, we're not going to ask you for your keys, your, or your proximity card, just in case, you know, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Jamie. And we all second that from over here, Heather. We really appreciate everything you've done for us, and we'll miss you. But you'll be stopping in. And I'll make a motion to adjourn. So move to your second.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hi. Here, he did it first.
The meeting's adjourned.
Christine.